Thank you. I'd now like to, we're ready to begin. The Planning Commission is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and is posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you. Chair Trowbridge.
Here.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Groynes.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
And Commissioner Flankas.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adherence to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 3, 2009 Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of this one.
Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. Are there any, let's move on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, for item 8, the applicant has requested that this item be held to the January 28 Planning Commission meeting. And item 21, the applicant has requested that this item be tabled.
Thank you. Is anyone in attendance wishing to speak on either of these items?
Mr. Chairman, I move that these items be brought forward and approved as requested.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. There are no consent items, nor are there any one motion, one vote items, so we can go right away to the public hearing items. Item number 6 and its companion item number 7, item 6 is variance 35-528. The applicant owner is Body Flying US LLC, is to allow 59 parking spaces where 69 are required for proposed commercial recreation amusement indoor use on the south side of Sahara Avenue, approximately 440 feet east of this 6th Street. And its companion item, number 7, site development view 35-186, is for a proposed 79-foot-tall, 9,979-square-foot commercial recreation amusement indoor building with waivers of perimeter landscaping standards to allow landscape buffers of 5 feet along the south perimeter where 15 feet is required, 0 feet along the north and west perimeters where 8 feet is required, and 3 feet along the east perimeter where 8 feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of two separate parcels and is partially developed. Currently, the northern portion of the site contains a 3,475-square-foot medical office building, and the southern portion is undeveloped. The proposed development occurs on the southern portion. Staff notes that the current configuration will precipitate the overbuilding of the site, as evidenced by the requested waivers, exceptions, and the variance for parking. As such, staff makes a finding that the variance is self-imposed, and therefore is recommending denial of both applications. Please note, we do have a couple of condition changes, actually, we have three condition changes in regards to the site plan if approved. I'd like to read those into the records. Condition number 5 shall read as follows, to be amended, "Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall demonstrate that at a distance of 100 feet in any direction from the wind tunnel, the sound level from the wind tunnel portion of the facility, fan, motor, wind movement, will be a maximum of 55 dBAs and not be a contributing factor to the existing sound level in the surrounding neighborhood. At a distance of 500 feet in any direction from the wind tunnel portion of the facility, fan, motor, wind movement, the sound level from the wind tunnel will be a maximum of 41 dBAs and will not be a contributing factor to the existing sound level in the surrounding neighborhood. The existing DBA levels in the surrounding neighborhood shall be used as a comparison for the sound level resulting from the operation in the wind tunnel portion of the facility." And then, condition number 7, to be amended as follows, to add a sentence at the end of it to say, "The plan shall be revised to depict the required 14 trees within the proposed landscape buffers on the east and south." Additionally, we do have one other item we want to add, which reads as follows, "The applicant shall work with city staff to determine the most appropriate mapping action necessary to consolidate the existing parcels. The mapping action shall be completed and recorded prior to the issuance of building permits."
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to state her case. Name for the record, please.
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, 3800, oh, excuse me. Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road. We just recently moved offices. I'm still getting used to a new office address. With me also tonight is Bob Gronhour in the audience, as well as the owner and developer and operator of this proposed facility, a gentleman by the name of Gary Spear. If you turn to the aerial, and if you can zoom in just a little bit. Thank you. Right here is Sahara Avenue, which is 100-foot right-of-way, and in black I have hatched the proposed location of our site. The pink area represents all of a C1 zoned area, and immediately to the north of it is a property that is zoned, although not built, for RPD 25. The reason I wanted to start with this map is to show that we have chosen this location because it is in an entirely commercial area located along Sahara Boulevard. Again, the property is Zone C1, and tonight I am not before you asking for any zone change or any special use permit to do this particular use. I am here tonight asking for a site plan review and a variance. And I'll talk about those applications in a second, but first I want to give you a little bit of background on the type of use that we're proposing to do. The type of use is for an indoor facility where you could body-fly. It's called Body Flying US. That is the name on the application. The facility itself is entirely enclosed, and that's an important point for me to note because, as I talk later on, there has been some concerns raised about sound that this facility could generate. Obviously, your staff has read into the record a condition specifically relating to sound noises, because as we had our neighborhood meetings, that was one of the main issues that they raised. This gives you a rendering of what the facility would look like. The actual wind tunnel is here in the round area, and then we've put a facade around it so that you wouldn't just be the round portion of the wind tunnel, but rather make it look more like a true building, a four-sided building rather than a round building, and that's the elevation that we have proposed in our neighborhood meetings. With respect to the wind tunnel itself, it's important to note that there are no vents for outside air on the top of this facility. That's really critical to note because that is why we know that we won't generate sound to the surrounding neighborhood more than what the sound is out there today. And again, that's been one of the main components that the neighbors have asked us about. The wind tunnel itself is entirely enclosed, and the air within the wind tunnel circulates within itself. And you may say, "Well, they have to get air in there somehow, so how does that happen?" The actual air just comes in the regular way we get into air in all of our buildings, which is through the front door. Beyond that, they aren't drawing any air from the outside. The motor on this particular wind tunnel would be located at the top, right up here. Obviously, the motor is encased within metal structure. It's not an exposed motor to the outside elements. The wind tunnel itself is surrounded by a 12-inch concrete cylinder design. The proposed owner of this, I should say the owner of this, is a gentleman who also actually owns the land and has been in the business of body-flying for 25 years. It is the gentleman who I introduced earlier, a gentleman by the name of Gary Spear. He does own another facility in Tennessee. So I bring up his experience only to let you, as well as the neighbors, know that he has experience in this industry, and he has for over two decades. The operation itself, for someone who has never been into a body-flying facility, I ask Gary to walk me through what an experience would be if he went into this particular facility. Each experience, that's the way we kind of term it, takes about an hour and a half for a person. The reason you get to an hour and a half is because, right when you get in, it's by appointment only, you go in and you watch an instructional video that takes approximately 25 minutes. It also takes an additional 25 minutes to put the gear on that you need, and then you need to go into the tunnel, and oftentimes it's with another instructor unless you're a professional, but you're in the tunnel with an instructor. The average price, or I should say the average base price, just to do a three-minute flight within the tunnel itself is about $70 to $75. What Gary has found in his 25 years of experience is, people get in there, they'd like to fly longer durations, and so the average price usually turns out to be about $150 a person to have a full experience within the wind tunnel. In terms of how many people, both we can handle at any given hour, as well as employees, we can handle 16 people per hour who would make an appointment to come in. You could have a walk-in, but again, we know that we can handle 16 people per hour. From an employee standpoint, you have six people there at any given time. So, in our justification letter, we indicated that we believe, from a practical standpoint, as it relates to the parking, you probably have about, I'm going to estimate a little higher, maybe 25 people there at a time, and if every single person drove their own car, there'd be 25 cars there. I will get into the variance a little bit later, but we're providing, just to round out that thought, 59 spaces. So, we know from a practical standpoint, we're going to be underutilizing the parking that's already provided, even though we recognize that we're 10 spaces short and needed to file for a variance. With respect to the actual site plan review, this is Sahara right here, and to give you an idea of the surrounding businesses, since that aerial is not up anymore, 6th Street is approximately right here. And in between 6th Street and our property, there's a Marie Callender's. You've got an inline strip mall back here which has Cafe Heidelberg. Tony Roma's is located here. You have another inline retail building here, and then you have the property that we're asking for tonight. On our site, we do own two parcels. The first parcel is vacant till about right here, and then the back parcel has an existing office building on it. It is a dentist office building. It's a gentleman by the name of Dr. Meyer Henry. He's been there for a number of years. His office building is a component of our site plan review because our property line goes all the way to the middle of the parking lot just north of Dr. Meyer Henry's building. In terms of the height of our structure, we are at 79 feet. To give you an idea of whether or not that fits in with the immediate area, there are overhead transmission lines that run along Sahara, and the height of those power lines or transmission lines is approximately 76 feet. There is a billboard that's located right here. The approximate height of that is 56 feet, and there is a nearby office building just located on the other side of this street alley, which has an approximate height of 62 feet. With respect to the waivers with the site plan review, we are asking for some waivers as they relate to the width of landscaping provided around the site. The first is for a waiver of landscaping along Sahara. It's, the way the application is worded, it says we're providing 5 feet where 15 feet is required. We're actually providing a total landscape along Sahara of 19 feet, but because of the N dot width of Sahara ultimately, a portion of our landscaping would be within that right-of-way, although, as you know and as you've driven up and down Sahara, there are many buildings that actually come right up to the right-of-way line of Sahara. So, for N dot to go in and widen to its full extent, there's obviously going to be some substantial changes up and down Sahara. So, our total width of landscaping along Sahara is 19 feet. Obviously, from a code standpoint, we had to ask for a waiver that indicates we're providing 5 feet where 15 feet is required. Along our east property line, we do have an additional landscape waiver. The north property line, which is up here, actually is, our parcel cuts literally right in between the parking lot of two, I believe dentist office buildings. And so, it today does not have landscaping, and it's a paved parking lot, and we're not here today to disrupt the flow of that parking lot and propose landscaping up there. Along the west property line, we do have some landscaping in there, but this kind of follows along with, I'll call this, this particular unnamed street, an alley, if you will. We, it does cul-de-sac at the top and not go any farther north. So, we are providing landscape in certain areas, but we did have to ask for a waiver. One of the conditions that staff read into the record is, as you looked at the staff report, we were deficient in the number of trees that we were providing. It wasn't a situation of us not wanting to provide the trees, so what we did is we looked at the site again, and we have committed to providing the required number of trees, which is 22 trees. We specifically think that it's the best to provide those additional 14, we're already providing eight, the additional 14 along Sahara Avenue, just from an overall beautification standpoint, as well as along our east property line. We think that that's the best location to put those trees. Obviously, if the commissioner or the neighbors have other feelings on that, we'd be happy to change where we've indicated we'd like to put those trees. But the point being is that we want to make sure we're providing the full amount of trees required by code, just in a reduced landscape width. From the standpoint of overall site planning, I would like to point out that we exceed your setback requirements and that we're not asking for any residential adjacency standards. As I kind of touched on earlier regarding the parking variance and the actual use, I think that there's a couple of points that are good to note. The overall square footage of the building, as indicated in the staff report, is 9,979 square feet. That is just for the body-flying building. That is not for the office building up here. We asked our builder to take a look at what is actually usable. In other words, where can people be within the body-flying facility, and usable is actually 7,604 square feet. If you did that square footage times the required parking that we're required to have under code, we'd be required to provide 38 parking stalls. We're providing 59. Now, another component of that is, again, we have to provide parking for the dentist office since it is part of our overall application. The dentist office is 3,400 square feet approximately. It is one dentist who's been there for a number of years. He has two hygienists who work for him. He's only open four and a half days a week. He's open Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 8 to 5, Friday only half day, and he is closed Wednesday, Saturday, and Sunday. We know from our experience that the peak usage of this facility is afternoon to evening. So, I would submit to you that certainly, in relation to just our parcel, opposite hours for the most part of the dentist office that's also located on our site. So, we believe in a reality standpoint that we will always have excess parking available, just based upon the sharing of uses between the office building and the use that we're asking for tonight. We have had two voluntary neighborhood meetings. We had one, I believe, in October and one in November. At the first neighborhood meeting, as your staff report indicates, there were approximately 20 people there, and I think it would be fair to say, the way it was characterized, that a third or so seemed to be in favor, a third were opposed, and then a third just didn't comment, one way or another. But in that meeting, the neighbors raised two main issues that we wanted to follow back up with them about, I should say, two and a half, really. One was regarding signage, and I think that that's an easy one for me to address. There is residential substantially north of our site, and there was some concern that we not, never to put signage on the north face of the building. There is a condition in the staff report today that we would not be putting any signage on the north face of the building. Number one, there'd be no need to, but number two, we wanted to make sure everybody knew we wouldn't be in asking for it. So, there's a condition that indicates there will be no signage on the north face of the building. The other, perhaps largest concern that we heard from the neighbors was a concern about the noise from the wind tunnel. What kind of noise would the wind tunnel generate? And so, what we did in between the first neighborhood meeting and the follow-up neighborhood meeting was, we had a sound level study prepared, and at the second neighborhood meeting, we had Todd McBrer, who's in the audience tonight, should you have any questions, come up with me at the neighborhood meeting and explain the findings of the sound study. And what, and I'm going to paraphrase, what we found, when he, I should say, what he found when he went out there, is that there is ambient noise out there today. Sahara actually does generate, Sahara, the traffic on Sahara generates actually quite a bit of noise. So, we wanted to give a fair comparison between the noise that's out there today and would we, if this wind tunnel were approved and it was in operation, add to that noise level. That is why we agreed to a really specific condition about the decibel levels that we would agree to. Your staff read that in earlier into the record, but it does take into account the existing noise levels, or I should say, sound levels that are there today, as well as any sound that would be generated from the wind tunnel, fan, motor, or wind movement. That gets at really what the sound would be generated from, to make sure that we're not increasing the noise that's out there. So, I'd be happy to read that condition in to the record again, but your staff did read it in already once tonight. I would like to submit this sound study for the record. Give a copy to your clerk. The other, the other condition, or issue, concern, I think, that was raised by the neighbor was, the neighbors was an overall concern about traffic, traffic to the site and parking. I think that kind of relates back to the variance, and so, what we have indicated that we would do is certainly along this, I'll call it the throat depth right here, this side of the alleyway is already striped red, so there shouldn't be anyone parking on that side. Our side actually isn't striped, but right now it's a vacant piece of property. So, we did indicate that we would obviously stripe that so that you wouldn't have any parking on our side of the alley. But in terms of overall traffic flow and concern about parking, we think that we've addressed that just based upon the nature of the use and knowing that we don't think we're going to generate the type of traffic that would cause any of the businesses in the surrounding area to see a negative impact. Finally, I would like to point out that there were some neighbors, as I indicated at the first neighborhood meeting, who spoke in support. So, we actually went into the neighborhood to see if there were more neighbors who would be in support of it. I do have a petition that I would like to submit tonight. It has approximately 100 homeowners who have signed in support in the area, and to be fair, I'd like to tell you what area that is. It is from Sahara to Oki and Maryland Parkway to just west of 6th Street. There are some homes that are on the other side of Marie Callender's in that area, so we did think that they were fairly within the vicinity of who we should go out and talk to. We also went to the businesses, because as I started the presentation and I showed the zoning map that showed that this site is predominantly located in a very commercial area, those two are our neighbors. And tonight, I know that there are some neighbors from the business community who are here tonight to express their concerns, but we did reach out to other businesses in that area, and they too have signed, and that is included in the petition, which I will submit for the record, a letter of support. And just to name a few of those, there's a barber shop, Rainbow's End, Statewide Lighting, Marie Callender's. There's a jewelry and mineral store, as well as a barber shop, just to name a few. They've indicated their names in the petition specifically so you would know which businesses they were. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I know that there's a number of people who would like to speak tonight, but at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think we'll hold off on taking questions from the commissioners until after the public input portion, and then we'll have some questions for you, I'm quite sure. The public hearing is open. Before I invite the people to want to speak, I would like to simply explain that we will allow the primary spokesman for the opposition a reasonable amount of time to present the case. We will also ask any additional people that want to speak to come forward. I would ask them to take advantage of the two microphones that are here to kind of speed up the process. I would also caution them that they should be restricted to three minutes in their presentation, and out of respect for everyone that's here, please restrict their comments to things that haven't been previously mentioned. So, bring up new information if you would. Additionally, I'd like to simply caution everybody that to keep some civility in the tonight's proceedings, that we don't get involved in any booing or cheering or any of that foolishness, because it just takes away from the professional decorum that we try to maintain. So, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, and there will be a piece of paper up there. We would like to get you, there is no piece of paper this time? Okay, then enunciate your name clearly so that the clerk's office will have a good chance of spelling it right for the record. So, the public hearing's open. Please come up and state your case. For the record, while he's coming up, I would mention that we do have in our possession a letter dated October 16 from Mr. Terry Hunt. We have one dated October 22 from Dr. Mashhood. We have one dated January 12 from Terry Hunt, and we have an additional one dated January 14 from Terry Hunt. And we also have a letter from State Assemblyman Tig Schuler Blurm, dated January 14. So, those are all a matter of record at this point. Please proceed.
What I would like to do, if you are in agreement, is to have the engineer present his report first and have some of the other people, and then I would like to come in a little bit closer to the end to tie everything up.
Let's find, we can.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Terry, T-E-R-R-Y, Hunt, H-U-N-T, 700 East Sahara.
And the engineer is?
Hi, I'm, is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Roger Freeman, Superior Engineering Services, 7464 West Sahara.
Thank you.
I've been asked to prepare a look at the parking study that's required for this, and I've got copies of my comments for all the commissioners, and I write, I have one for the clerk at this point in time, and then I'll give the rest.
Thank you.
Basically, what we found is there's, most of the people, most of the buildings that are out there are currently unoccupied, and once they get filled back up again, there's not going to be a lot of excess parking available. To do a parking demand analysis, what we have to do is, we either look at, we have a handbook, ITE handbook called Parking Generation 3rd Edition. If we have that, then we can use it, but there was no land use to address this specific land. So, the next thing you have to do is to go out and look at a similar project in the area. And we were able to find a similar project at, it was called Vegas Indoor Skydiving at 200 Convention Center Drive. I Googled the size of the building, and it came up to be approximately 7,000 square feet, and the fan area was approximately 1,500 square feet. So, there are 975 square feet for this building. It's quite similar. So, you can expect similar parking demand for both of them. We looked at, I went through and counted the number of vehicles on October 14, on a Thursday, on Wednesday, October 15 on a Thursday, and on a Friday, October 16. At that location, they had 33 vehicles, two motorcycles on Wednesday, and 34 vehicles and one motorcycle on Thursday. Talking to the owner, the owner's manager, he said that approximately one-fourth of what they normally would do on a peak day was the number of people that were flying at this point in time. So, realistically, if you're looking for a peak demand, you'd multiply that number by four. If you do that, you're looking at close to 136 vehicles that would be parked out there at that point in time. Something else that we looked at was at the actual site plan, and one of the things I picked up almost immediately was that the driveway for the southerly exit for their parking lot up close to Sahara Avenue is much, much too close to Sahara Avenue. It's within 30 feet. There's a standard drawing, uniform standard drawing, 222A, that sets a throat depth minimum, depending on the number of parking stalls. We counted over 125 parking stalls there. If you have that many parking stalls that feed into one area coming out in the street, you need 100-foot throat depth. So, they're about 70 feet short of where they need to have their driveway location where they tie into the, they call it the, they call it the alleyway. I call it, I call it the vergway on my drawing. So, there's, they probably need to do a variance for that also, because what happens, I don't have a drawing in front of me, but when you have a car pulling out to turn left on Sah- left on Sahara, and some car comes from their driveway to turn in behind this car, and then there's a car turning off of Sahara going into the into this area, that would stop that car, and at 30 feet, and then the second car coming in would have to, would back traffic up on Sahara Avenue. And now you're, now you've got a real problem because, and this will primarily happen in the afternoon peak hour, where the first car trying to come out is trying to make a left turn out. And that's one of the big reasons why they have these long-term storage spaces, to minimize those kind of problems. So anyway, that's basically what we found, was those two items.
If if, not to interrupt you, but is that, you're saying a vehicle exiting where the parking area is going to be, is going to block someone that's trying to come into that particular street?
Yeah.
But it's a 30-foot wide street with no parking on the other side, correct?
Uh, the, we measured the parking width, it it was 29 feet curb to curb.
With no parking on other side, either side?
Well, you know, that's true.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What what I'm, what I'm seeing is that a car coming out here, making a left, has to stop to let the traffic clear so he can make his left. A car behind him, if he blocks this, when a car comes in, that there's room for one car here, a second car would start backing up traffic on Sahara. And with that many parking stalls, 225 or so, not counting these, you don't expect to get a lot of traffic making lifts, especially during the peak hour.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Lucian Pilot Public Works. I'm looking at our area here, and we have a a large median that prevents lefts out for this site.
Thank you.
So it's only right in, right out.
So that won't happen?
Okay.
Okay.
Perhaps I could clarify just a little bit. The applicant's attorney mentioned, said that this entire area was red. It's not. It's only a short distance back here to to where there's a fire hydrant, and actually from here to about here, there is parking allowed, and we do use that on a daily basis.
Thank you.
You can see the the curb is kind of painted red there. Another thing that they gave me was, this was a picture showing what it looks like when you have all the people occupying all the buildings back there. Can you see that? It's these two right here. When 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 all the car, when all the buildings are occupied, there's very few parking spaces available, so there the overflow would would really be a problem, especially if they're looking at multiplying 34, 35 cars by a factor of four. As narrow as this driveway is.
That 35, I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but the 35 or 40 by a factor of four is based upon a comment made by the operator of a competing business?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, but even if it's double, it's still quite a bit more than than. What you need to do when you when you look at parking demand is you want to try to hit the worst-case conditions, and the worst-case conditions, according to this other operator, was during the summer or the spring break, I guess a lot of kids come from college and dare each other to do it, and that really kicks up the number of vehicles or pedestrians that are using this type of facility. So.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Like I had mentioned, we've got two microphones, so if we could, we could cut on the downtime, sir, and your name for the record?
My name is Stan Zarowski. I'm the owner of a Nevada Coin Mart building at 750 East Sahara Avenue. I built my building and have operated my business there since 1981. My property abuts the Body Flying property on the west side of my property and building. The variances to allow a three-foot setback on their east side would put Body Flying within six feet of my building's wall. Body Flying is a wind tunnel using 1,000 horsepower motor, pushing a propeller developing wind speeds of 150 miles per hour. The tip speed of this propeller develops approximately 92% of the speed of sound, and the speed of sound is 760 miles per hour. The sound from this propeller and wind noise will cause vibration and sound levels that will be transmitted inside my building. Body Flying claims the noise level inside the flying chamber is 105 decibels. Sound levels of 105 decibels borders on the line of deafening, according to the OSHA. The tunnel is put 14 feet into the ground, sending out waves of vibration from the propeller and wind. How will this impact my building just six feet away? Additionally, 800 horsepower or 170 tons of air conditioning will also be added to this disturbance. What is going to happen when these enormous motors are powered up and down? Will they cause power spikes, brownouts? Body Flying has positioned its similar projects next to shopping malls, industrial parks, and near airport. I do not believe this type of amusement belongs in a congested area among office buildings and homes. If this project is approved and built, I am very concerned about being able to continue to operate my business, given the noise and vibration that I believe will occur. I am also concerned about the future value of my property. Who would want to purchase my building and land if Body Flying U.S. project has denied us quiet enjoyment of our property? We have a severe shortage of parking now in the 700 block of Sahara Avenue. It is my concern that Body Flying's customers will consume my building's parking also. This approval would also gravely impact our prospective plans for redevelopment on the five acres of mixed use, our property in conjunction with the property held immediately abiding ours, that is owned by Republic Services. I am asking you for your help to protect the business and homes that are already here from being severely impacted by this project. I respectfully request that you deny this application, and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
All right. As I stated, my name is Terry Hunt, owner of the Tiger Lily Flower Shop. We occupy 3,600 square feet of this building right here. I have devoted 30 years of my life and most of my life savings to this business. I have been at this location since 1979, when it was called the Pedal Pusher Flower Shop. Although we have three retail shops in the area, this location is our mother's store, and it is the headquarters for all of our operations. Over the years, we have employed hundreds of people in the Las Vegas area, and currently we employ 28 people. We generate approximately $2 million per year in sales. We are also very well-known for our charity work and for our community involvement. I would like to be able to continue in business for years to come. I also have some concerns about the noise, and I know that Stan mentioned the air conditioning, which I think can stand a little bit of emphasis. Their own engineer mentioned in our neighborhood meeting on November 2nd, the figure of 600 kilowatts of air conditioning required because of the heat generated by this 1,000 horsepower motor. This, when you do the calculation, and I doubled and triple-checked it, is equivalent to more than 170 tons of air conditioning. And if you divide that by 3.5, which is the average household air conditioner, that would be the equivalent of 48 air conditioning units all in one location. They have not presented any information as to what the noise level would be from these air conditioning units. They have stated that they would guarantee that the sound from the propeller would be less than a certain amount at certain distances, but no mention has been made about the sound generated by these air conditioning units. I also am concerned about the ground vibration, given that they were able to reduce the height of the tower by sinking it approximately 14 to 16 feet into the ground. Also, their attorney said that the closest, the highest building in the neighborhood was 62 feet. She was referring to the Republic Services building, which is over here. In fact, it is not 62 feet, it is 54 feet eight inches, and that's taken directly off of their building plans. So this tower would be approximately 25 feet higher than any building in the vicinity. The traffic engineer has done an excellent job in presenting his results of his efforts. I would like to point out that we were unaware that they were intending to share parking with the with Dr. Meyer Henry's office. We thought that they were going to have all of those at all times available to them. So that, even though they're requesting a variance of 10 parking spaces, in in effect, it's even more than that because they're still counting on sharing parking spaces with an existing facility, which is the doctor, uh, Gettys office. So that further complicates their parking requirements, and that is one of my major concerns. I I do not want to be in the position of having to defend my parking lot from encroachment.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of, can I ask a question of the individual, Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
You own the flower shop that's right, that's, I see, it seems like it'll be directly west of the proposed development. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, there's an alleyway between the two. Do you see that alleyway there?
It's not actually an alley, it's a private drive.
Okay, now, now, I'm understanding that you use that private drive to park.
We do.
Okay, and if this project's approved, you won't be able to use that as your private parking anymore, will you?
Technically, the property line is right down the center here, so unless something changes, we we would still be allowed to park on our side of that private drive, because it belongs to the property that we occupy.
So is that a problem for you?
Yes. If, we use this parking every day. There are days when we have no parking spots available in our parking lot behind our building, and we use that every single day.
Why don't you have parking available there?
We do have parking available here.
But not enough for your use?
No, we, the business has expanded over the years to the point that there are times when we, there is not a single spot available. I should point out that there's also a restaurant in in that occupies about 25% of this building, and they often have large amounts of people. For example, at CES recently, they had, they completely took over the parking lot. We did not have a single space available, and they they had to park all back down in this alley, in this parking area down here in order to accommodate their customers.
Okay, let's, let's.
If I could just have one last minute. We are not opposed to commercial development. If the applicant would like to build a racquetball club or a retail shopping center or office building, I'd gladly vote in favor of that. And we have seen, like many businesses, a downturn in business the last two years, but I would like to say that in the last two months, we have seen an increase in business compared to the previous year. And to me, that indicates that our economy is turning around, and I think it would be a shame to approve a project simply because of economic, current economic conditions, only to find that it harms future development in our neighborhood. As I said, my dream is to continue in business for years to come, and I'm appealing to you, the members of the Planning Commission, to help make this dream a reality.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If I may ask him one question.
Sure.
Is is this your parking?
Yes, that is.
Let me ask staff or Public Works, is is this currently legal to to stack cars in a in a parking, so emergency vehicles can't get through if they have to?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, thanks. I I don't see the picture, but.
It's on the screen somehow.
Okay.
It's up the alley.
Yeah, let, yeah, let me explain.
Sir, can you let staff?
Let's let staff respond.
This vehicle here on the left.
Excuse me, sir, we would like staff to respond first. Thank you.
First, let me say, this is, it's not a public right of way, so it's technically private property, and they have a a mutual easement sharing that driveway for use, for benefit use of all the properties back there. So typically, that's, it's up to them to regulate. However, I know, I know there is a fire hydrant there, so they can't park against the fire, next to the fire hydrant, and they, you know, they can leave, they should leave openings so a vehicle can pass, but typically, Public Works cannot regulate the private property.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Title 19 requires all parking spaces to be unimpeded by another vehicle, and Title 19 would not permit that situation as depicted in the photograph. That would be a violation of Title 19.
Thank you. Ma'am, please.
My name is Pam Hartley, and I live at 1700 Rexford.
The microphone appears to not be working.
Hello? It's red.
Okay, now you're good, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Pam Hartley, I live at 1700 Rexford, and I've lived in the downtown neighborhoods my whole life. I grew up in Johness Park. I own a home in Southridge, and I currently live in Beverly Green. And I was president of Southridge Neighborhood Association when we put together the Beverly Green-Southridge Neighborhood Plan. I'm not sure if all of you have seen it, but it is an advisory document. We took over two years to put it together, and it represents what the vision of our neighborhood. There are a lot of people that worked very hard on this project, and one of the chapters addresses existing land use, and I'd like to read you the two paragraphs regarding that. Residents were also concerned with the possibility of amusement rides being developed within the same area and their negative impact on the quality of life in the neighborhood. To reduce this concern, residents proposed the following. Any amusement ride proposed for this area east of Las Vegas Boulevard and within this neighborhood's planned boundaries will be no higher than 50 feet from the natural grade of the ground. That, that the above-proposed standard is not an endorsement of amusement rides, just a standard for developers to consider for such projects in this neighborhood. So this is part of our neighborhood, our neighborhood plan. It is an advisory document, but I would like to point out that when Body Flying first brought this project forward back in August of 2007, staff actually quoted from our neighborhood plan as part of the reason for recommending denial. And what they quoted was, any amusement ride proposed for the area east of Las Vegas Boulevard and within this neighborhood plan's boundaries will be no higher than 50 feet from the natural grade of the ground. So this is not something that we feel is compatible with our neighborhood and haven't felt was compatible with our neighborhood for a very long time, so with all due respect, I would request that you recommend, that you deny it.
If I remember correctly, that document was prepared about the same time that the outside of the Stratosphere Tower was being considered for a ride that, there was a gorilla that was supposed to be there, or something goofy like that.
And then there was the roller coaster. It was actually the roller coaster.
Right, and an outdoor ride is, how does, an amusement ride that's outdoor, how does it differentiate in your mind from an indoor recreation facility?
At that time, we became concerned about amusements in general and with the redevelopment of Long Sahara.
But is there any difference between an amusement and a recreation facility?
It has to do with compatibility with the neighborhood.
Okay.
And yes, an amusement ride is not a retail or.
It's not a recreation facility?
No.
A recreation facility is not an amusement ride?
No, not in my mind, anyway.
All right. Okay, I see it, I I agree.
And.
A recreation facility is not an amusement ride?
No, no. And I actually have a copy, an additional copy of our neighborhood plan for.
Thank you.
And ma'am, your name again? Was it Amanda? Kate, what was your name again?
My name is Pam Hartley.
Pam, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, my name is Michael Hanratty, 1060 Benita Avenue. I'm the current president of Southridge Neighborhood Association and also the president of Sahara-Southridge Association of Businesses. That was just developed for reasons like this, and it doesn't matter how you dress this up, it's an amusement facility, and it's not compatible to what we've talked about as neighbors and businesses for the area. We, that's why we developed the Association of Businesses. And I was going to explain what Pam just explained about the amusement ride, and yes, that was. In lieu. that was in lieu of that, that roller coaster, but if it wasn't for the neighborhood associations, that roller coaster would probably be up and flying right now, and so would that gorilla be falling off the stratosphere also. So it's just not, it's, you know, you can dress it up any way you want, it's just not compatible with what we want for our area. And it is very close to, there's a group of homes around the south side of St. Louis which back upright to all the businesses there, and it's way too close to a residential area. And as far as the intake of wind, it has to breathe, it has to come out somewhere, it's going to cause noise. I don't care, and, and the, the, those numbers they're giving you are speculative because they didn't come up with anything, a prototype of this particular, of this particular building. So once it's built, it's, it's a done deal. You're stuck with it. So that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Scott Swank. I live at five four six Barbara Way. I'm the current president of the Beverly Green Neighborhood Association, the other, you know, geographically relevant neighborhood association. I'm here in opposition to this project. I'd like to state, I'm very involved in the neighborhood, I'm not just the president. After housing prices dropped, my wife and I bought a second house. We invaded them both. We're, we're really invested in the area, and I'm concerned that if this is going to potentially harm the local retail, that this is going to, going to turn Sahara away from the direction that the, the current plan proposes. If I may, the redevelopment plan for downtown in section one-ten redevelopment plan objectives states that goal D, or objective D, is the strengthening of retail, office, and other commercial and residential functions in the downtown area. And if this is going to be harming the sort of businesses that are serving the neighbors, then I can't help but oppose it because we don't want to lose Tiger Lily, we don't want to lose the restaurants there, we don't want people shying away from buildings that have ground vibrations, that have parking issues, that have potential noise issues. So what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see something put in there that will, that is harmonious with the current plan, and that will support, that will bring more business to the area, that will thrive itself, support, you know, help support the other businesses, and, you know, will comport with the plan. Thank you very much.
One, one question. You're the current president of the Beverly Green?
I am, yes.
And do you guys have regular meetings, or do you have periodic meetings?
We meet, um, we meet between, I would say, two and four times a year, depending on how many issues come up.
And do you notify the member or the residents of Beverly Green?
I emailed, in fact, everyone whose email address I have on this issue. I, I'm sorry? And we, for the meetings themselves, we send out city notifications, but on this issue, I emailed everyone that I knew, and my email from roughly a week ago drew no support, and several neighbors in opposition.
Well, I know that on the city's webpage, it has my address, my phone number, and how to reach me.
Yeah.
I, I'm not positive of this, but I think I'm one of the largest property owners in Beverly Green Association, and was part of this original thing here, and I've never received anything from the association concerning any of the project. Now, I don't mind, because I, I get, I get those from the, through planning, which I'm fine with, and, and, you know, but I think the association to be a more viable, valid voice for the, for the residents and property owners in the, in this area, it should be inclusive. And I raise this because when Beverly Green passed this neighborhood association, I attended most, all of the meetings, and raised a lot of questions about reaching out to those commercial property owners as you develop this association document. And it was mainly for things like this, to, to go to the property, the commercial property owners, be inclusive, so your plan wasn't an us and them type display, and that way you could be a partnership in seeing better development. And that's, that's partly, I, I'm concerned that this is strictly a residential association opposed to development, and that, and I think to, to better strengthen your arguments in the future, you need to be inclusive with the commercial property owners, and, because they've made major investments as well, and, as, same like the homeowners have.
Now, I'm, I'm actually here in support of the current businesses, and I'd love to see some business that comports with the plan go in. We've actually, I and a couple of the people here, and my wife, have gone door-to-door firing every single door, both a single-family and multifamily in the area. So if, if we haven't, haven't gotten ahold of you, I, I regret it, and I'd love to have you attend our next meeting. I, I, I'll be sure of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, my name's Peter Fergieri. I live at eighteen oh one Chapman, it's actually across Maryland Parkway from the proposed project. I am here in opposition to this project. I'm a longtime resident of the neighborhood, I lived in John S. Park, now I'm in Marycrest. I also own a business on Charleston Gaia Flowers. And my opinion on this project is, and I know it may appear to the vice chairman that we just come up and oppose things, we, we, we are interested in the correct kind of development. This is an amusement. It's not going to benefit anybody in our neighborhood in any way. It's not, in my own opinion, and it's not educated or anything, it's, it's unsightly, and if I was a businessperson looking at, have properties adjacent to it, I would really be concerned with that look. If I was going to bring in a lounge, or, or something else that's more compatible to the area, or an office building, I really wouldn't want to have my offices next to this building. You know, people have brought up some, I think, valid concerns about the vibration, the noise, the traffic. No left turn out of, out of the, out of the property is going to cause some traffic issues. I, I just, I would prefer to see something in there that we would use. This is obviously going to be, be bringing people from the strip. Therefore, I think it belongs someplace on industrial, or Frank Sinatra, someplace closer to where the casino's and their businesses. I think this is probably an attractive piece of property due to the redevelopment opportunities the city's affording them, but I think in the long term, this could become a really, an unsightly project five, ten years down the road, which will inhibit additional urban type development. As the city, I believe, will start to contract, with, if people want to live more in the core, you're not going to have, have any, any sort of multifamily dwellings built there. It's just in the long run, it's just not going to work out. And there's also considerations about the viability of it. There's probably additional environmental concerns that haven't been raised. This is a huge motor. How does it work? What goes into this motor? Are there, are there solvents? Are there, are there lubricants? How is that handled? When is it taken in? When is it taken out? Where is it disposed of? And the amount of power that it draws? It's not a very green development. The thing is going to use a tremendous amount of electricity off of our grid in our area, and it just, it just doesn't make sense to me. Thanks very much.
Sir?
My name is John Delakonakis. I live at five forty-eight Barbara Way. I also am the vice president of the Beverly Green Neighborhood Association, and I've taken your comments to heart, and we'll do our best on that. You know, this application, you know, I've heard that, I've been here a few times on different projects, and it seems to follow the same script, you know? Applicants come here and they get the petitions, and they get the signatures, and that's all very fine and good, but I think you have to look at the tortured history of this application, and it is a tortured history. I don't care how many signatures one might get on a petition, I think the history speaks volumes. It tells us that there has been opposition to this. I mean, the project has been proposed twice, it has been kicked back twice, it has been abayed twice, and that, you know, business people don't just do this because they want to. They don't want to spend more money on lawyers, like me, to come here and lobby and make speeches. They do it because their economics are involved, and they realize they can't get their project through. So they tweak, and they try and do what they can. But what we have here today is essentially the same project that we had a couple of years ago. It really hasn't changed. So at least I want to bring that to this commission's attention, that there is opposition, and all you have to do is look at the history of this application. But why is there opposition? The reason why I believe there's opposition, is my own personal reason, is that this is simply not a compatible use. I mean, it, the issue is not, to me, sound. It's not sound, it's not vibration. To me, it's, what is the county's vision, and what is the city's vision for this corridor? Now, there are a group of businessmen out there, and business people, that want to expand the gaming corridor down Sahara towards Maryland, and kind of make this kind of an extra portion of Las Vegas Boulevard. Well, if that's the city's plan, that's fine. State it so, and so that homeowners around the area can act accordingly. But so far, I've been told by the county, by the city, that the plan for that corridor is to, you know, basically try to get businesses that are compatible with a residential area. This is a tourist attraction. It's a great tourist attraction, I'm sure it is. It's just in the wrong place. It just doesn't belong in the middle of Sahara. And that's my biggest opposition to this. Because at the end of the day, it is a tourist attraction, it really, as my colleague here said, it really doesn't bring much to the neighborhood, and I think at the end of the day, my biggest concern, looking in the next ten to fifteen years, and once we get out of this economic slump, we're going to see again developers trying to assemble parcels like we saw before the economic downturn occurred in my neighborhood, to extend the gaming corridor, and the amusement corridor, and the hospitality corridor. So if that really is the plan, this is the best way to do it, because what you do is you take one of these projects and you put it smack dab in the middle of Sahara, and every other applicant, when I come up here, someone else like Ms. Lazovich comes up here and says, well, you know, five years ago, gentlemen, ladies, you approved this type of use in the middle of the block. So why can't I expand now from Las Vegas Boulevard down to the middle of the block, and put my other touristic attractions? And that's why I'm opposed to it, and that's why this application should be denied. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If, if I could, that issue that you brought up regarding the expansion of the Gaming Enterprise District is what was brought up in the letter that was submitted by Assemblyman Sugarblum, and I would like, sort of like to ask the, the attorney, would any action on this request expand the Gaming Enterprise District?
Well, with, thank you, Chairman. With all due respect to the gentleman here, and with all due respect to the assemblymen, I'm not sure how action on, on this item alone would expand the statutory exclusion, or the statutory Gaming Enterprise District found in Inter S. four sixty-three. I'd be more than happy to, to speak with the assemblymen, or this gentleman here, to understand their, their arguments in whole, but based upon the state of the law, I don't know how one could expand a gaming district merely by approving this item of variance and the next item of site development plan review.
The expansion is not so much the per se expansion of the gaming district to allow gaming enterprises. If I didn't make my point clear, I apologize. What I'm saying is, this is a touristic attraction, not in keeping with the current uses of the corridor, nor is it in keeping with the neighborhood plan that was adopted by the city councils and advisory document, nor is it in keeping with the county's plans for that corridor. So what, if you have this type of use in the middle of the block, you'll have other touristic amusement-type applicants coming later on, expanding that use down the corridor. And what I'm saying is, that's simply not in keeping with the present plan, nor should it be.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, Jonell Thomas. It's J.O.N.E.L.L. I live at fifteen oh nine South Fifth Place, and I'm the vice president of the John S. Park Neighborhood Association. I, I had a plan to address some other issues, particularly the blight that would be created in this area should this business fail. This is not like a dentist office that fails, that another office could move into that same facility. This would be a very unique building that would not be conducive to having a new tenant move in and take over, and which would basically sit there vacant and unused and add to the blight of the area, should it not succeed. As, there's always a possibility with any new business, but particularly one where there are already amusement facilities of this type in more appropriate areas. But what instead I'd like to address is, is the role of the neighborhood associations. And, and the fact is, we're volunteer organizations. To my knowledge, all of us have other employments, family obligation jobs. We volunteer our services, we don't have a budget, we don't collect homeowners dues, and we dedicate our time to these matters because we care about our neighborhoods. And we may not knock on every door, and we may not be able to send out mass mailings, but you all know that we have been here for years because we care about this area, and that's why we're here, and we don't want to have a blight move into the area. And so on behalf of the John S. Park Neighborhood, which has not had a specific meeting regarding this area, but which wholeheartedly supports the ability of residents who live near these facilities to come in and voice their concerns, I offer my support to the neighborhoods that would be most impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, my name is Gregory Brown. I live at six oh six Bonita Avenue, that's in the Southridge neighborhood. I was formerly the president of the Southridge Neighborhood Association, and in fact, when I was president of the association, just to answer Vice Chairman Tristle's question, we did not have any meetings with the businesses, but I really think that we all should congratulate, my successor, Michael Hanratty, who spoke to you earlier, because he's put together a council of business owners on Sahara, which is part of the neighborhood association and which meets with regularly, and I think you've heard from the businesses, in fact, the directly adjacent businesses, that they are concerned, Tiger Lily, Republic Services, Dr. Mahmud's Clinics, and the Nevada Coin Mart. And they are all concerned that this could create a dead zone in the heart of what is intended to be, by the city's own redevelopment plan, a space for office, retail, and restaurants. Most of the other points that I think are salient have been made, that there are already existing indoor skydiving amusements elsewhere in Las Vegas. There's another one that is an outdoor skydiving amusement that's now projected to go right up the street on the strip at the Stratosphere. And that the case of this one, an eighty-foot brightly painted silo, that really could not be repurposed should the business decide not to continue there, would almost certainly create another vacant property on the redevelopment corridor which is intended for office, retail, and restaurant. It's not just our neighborhood plan that is against this proposal, the city's redevelopment authority guidelines, section one-ten D that were mentioned, the county's redevelopment design standards, the Sosa standards that they adopted for the south side of Sahara, and I actually have an email which I'd like to submit from Councilman Chinkilianni, in which she says that she's very concerned that this would be incompatible with the county's redevelopment standards for the south side of Sahara Avenue. The staff report, your own planning department, suggests that this would overbuild a site, and that this is a self-inflicted burden. And I think that the assemblyman's letter, which was intended to communicate the concern that a lot of us in our neighborhood, because we spent a lot of time making phone calls and writing letters last spring, because we were very concerned that this was, the proposal to expand the gaming corridor eastward was the first step in an attempt to convert Sahara Avenue into an extension of the strip. We think that this would absolutely kill not only our neighborhood, but all of the surrounding commercial areas, and the, the fact that he sees this as a potential political problem, not a legal problem, suggests to us that this is yet another reason why an amusement is simply inappropriate in a corridor that's slated for retail, office, and commercial, and restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Donna Nelson, two thousand and one, South Tenth Street. I've lived in the area for quite a while, and I was approached to come here and support this project. I personally have lived in this neighborhood long enough to know that I've been to Tiger Lily's, I've been to Murray Calenders. Most of the people that we get in that area are tourists anyways from the strip, they want somewhere to go, to, you know, not be on the strip. I don't see why the skydiving is such a big, being opposed so bad, because me personally, as a resident right next to the area, I don't think it would be any worse than hearing all people scream from the Stratosphere. I can stand outside my door and I hear them all the time. That wasn't stopped. What, what is the big, I don't understand what the big deal would be for skydiving to be in the neighborhood, because I don't personally see where it's going to be that much more noisy than it ever is. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Sir?
Timothy Keller, K.E.L.L.E.R., five five eight Ellen Way. My father was a paratrooper during Vietnam, and my brother has been skydiving recreationally since he was twenty-five. He is currently thirty-six. One of the things he always said was that the greatest way to learn how to skydive was with these indoor skydiving facilities, instead of getting in a plane, going up four or five thousand feet, and jumping out. Yeah, it was, yeah. I understand that it will be more used for the tourists, but I am sure that Las Vegas has a, probably a fairly good skydiving community inside of it, and I'm sure they would love to have a place where they could go in and practice falling a hundred feet instead of four thousand feet. Also, I mean, could you think of a better date? Come on, let's go fake skydiving, let's go over to Murray Calenders, you know? Guy gets his girlfriend some flowers from the flower shop, you know, I mean. the flower shop, you know? I mean, yeah, I just, I think it would be good. It would bring in some business into that neighborhood. And it is a self-contained system. I mean, the air that they're pushing around in this, in the silo, is the air that's already in the silo, you know? I mean, it's not like they're sitting in a vacuum and they're trying to draw air from the outside. So I am, I am very pro this.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Joshua DiMarco, 2001 South 10th Street. And I'm pro for the project, too. I believe, like they said, it will, it'll help out all the other places around it. It'll be good if people go to that, and then they'll want to go get something to eat after they're done. And I think it'll just be really good for the neighborhood, because I've lived there for a long time, too. And like they said, it's, the noise from the Stratosphere is, nobody stopped that, so I don't think there's going to be much worse from that. So I just, I'm pro for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi. I'm Eugene Godina, G-O-D-I-N-A. I'm also one of the co-owners of the Tiger Lily Flower Shop. And actually, the people who just spoke are part of what prompted me to come back up here, because they're absolutely right. There is a desire for this sort of activity, and that's one of the things that we pointed out in some of the information that we sent to council, was the website that the company has up in the UK and the extreme sports that they do there. And so I believe that they're a recreational facility, and I believe that's a half-truth. My concern is what their potential is, and what they may become, and how that will affect us. Because when there are three or four hundred people showing up for an event, I'm really, you know, interested in how that's going to affect the community. And it's not like they have regular operating hours. They operate until eleven o'clock at night. And you're absolutely right. I live at Rancho Anokee. I can hear the Stratosphere from Rancho Anokee. So what are the neighbors going to hear at eleven o'clock at night, when everything closes down, and all these people come outside, and they're all jacked up, and they're all excited? So why, it's an interesting project. I'm just really not sure, in the long run, for several reasons, again, if it were to fail, what would become of that building? That's a huge concern. And I'd like to seriously take into consideration when you're taking this into consideration. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question of the individual here?
Please.
Why do you think there's going to be three hundred people coming out of there at nighttime, at eleven o'clock? I don't understand that.
If you go to their website, one of the things that they promote is extreme sports. Okay? That's some of the information that we've provided for you. So if you go to their website, they do worldwide competitions.
But I didn't think they were going to be doing competitions on this location.
Well, I don't know. In my mind, when I see a building that big, and I'm a business owner, I have to pay for it somehow. So I guess having a few people stop by to play around is okay, but at some point, I need some mass volume to pay for that building. So that's the part where I kind of feel like we've been given half-truths when we've shown up to the meetings, is that they want us to believe that it's a simple little project, and there's going to be a few people stopping by and only a few employees. And I don't know how it pays for it, you know? It's dollars and cents, and it doesn't make sense to me. So at some point-
That's the way they portrayed it, because that's not the way that they portrayed it here today. I didn't get it was just going to be a few people, but I didn't see that it was going to be three hundred either. But I don't want to debate it with you. I just wonder where you got the information from, your information from the website. All right. Thank you.
And the fact that it is a world-growing sport, exports is growing, this is part of that sort of trend. So, you know, with it being successful, I hope it would be successful wherever it's placed, hopefully someplace else, that that would be something, because I'd love to see something like that come to Vegas. I'm just not sure it belongs in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I have a couple of questions for staff. Is the bus stop at Murray Callender's, or is it here? Does anybody know?
It's at Murray Callender's.
Murray Callender's. Thank you very much. The other thing is, is this property that's in question, is it part of Beverly Green Neighborhood Association? Or is it just a budget? It is part. Thank you.
Within the plan area.
Southridge. It's part of Southridge.
Southridge, I see.
Well, I just wonder how they can get involved in somebody's business plan. But I worked at Moffett Field for quite some time. They have a wind tunnel there that reaches supersonic speeds. You walk away thirty feet, not even thirty feet. You shut the doors to that hangar. You cannot hear anything. You cannot feel any vibration or anything like that. So I, you know, I know that this is a thousand horsepower motor, you know, but there's ways to dampen the noise and dampen the sound. The other thing, they're not, there's, there's a comment that there was about the height, but they're not asking, they don't need a height variance. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. So the only thing they're actually asking for is a parking variance. Is that what we're after here?
And some landscaping.
And they have justified why they don't need those required spots. I'm just trying to get down to the nuts and bolts of this thing. So, but I see some neighbors here that have overbuilt and underparked their things, and they're getting, and they want to now limit these people, the applicants. And I just don't think that's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I think we've seen the photograph that you intend to show us.
Okay. I just was going to-
And that was from the World Championship. And in response to my colleague's question about three hundred people, in order to attract the World Finals, you need to have not only the cylinder in which the skydiving simulation occurs, you need a viewing area to accommodate the audience. This facility has no viewing area to accommodate an audience beyond the users.
Okay. I guess that's a point that they didn't make to us in the meetings. Thank you.
Okay. No further individuals wishing to speak on this matter. I declare the public hearing closed and allow the proponent the opportunity to respond to some of the comments that have been made, and we'll be asking lots of questions, I'm sure.
Thank you again, Jennifer Lazovich, for the record. I'm going to try to address some of the points that were raised, and then I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have. Just going in a reverse order to the last comment about holding the World Finals, you did raise my answer, which is, I am told by our owner, Gary Spear, Gary Spear, that we do not have at this facility, we're not proposing to build a tunnel that is big enough in diameter to host something like that. That's a good thing. And I apologize that I didn't communicate that to the neighbors. I'm not entirely sure I heard that at the neighborhood meetings, but I want to make sure that they know that the diameter of the wind tunnel that we're proposing just simply cannot handle it, the World Finals, because it's too small in circumference. With respect to the comment about the sound and the vibrations, I go back to a point that I raised when I did my initial presentation, and then would just like to add on to it a little bit. It is important to note the twelve inches of concrete that go around our tunnel. That is key, because it's what mitigates a lot, if not all, of the sound. Second to that is, there were several comments raised about the motor. And the motor, because of technology and how far we've come with technology, sits on very, they're called, let me get, make sure I get the words right, sits on an isolation pad. In addition to that, the technology is such that if the motor senses any vibration, it shuts itself off in seconds, because that's the thing you don't want to have. That would not be good. So that's how far technology has come, that if there's any vibration detected, the motor shuts off, I'm told, in actually quote unquote, less than seconds, but I think it's probably just as good to say seconds. With respect to the comments about parking and congestion, if you can go back to the site plan that I have. Thanks. I apologize for earlier making a statement that it was striped all the way back. Obviously, Mr. Hunt clarified that it was just right around the existing fire hydrant. We offered on our side, and I still make this an offer, to stripe it all the way on our side, so that you don't have the situation where the pictures that they depicted kind of block ingress and egress in this driveway. So we'd be happy to add that as a condition. We didn't intend to park along here. We intended to park in our parking lot, of course, in this area and those parking lots. In addition to that, right now, half of the lot is vacant. It's just dirt. We're actually adding parking to the area. I have explained, of course, our shared use with the dentist office to the north of us, but we're adding parking on a lot that right now has no parking. So to the extent that there is available parking, which we believe in a practical setting there will be, that's can be used by the people in the businesses that need additional parking, because we're adding paving for more parking. In terms of the, I suppose it's going to be an agree to disagree point on the amusement versus recreation aspect of this. Some would say there is no difference fundamentally. We would take the approach that we actually think there is a difference. We consider ourselves a recreational facility, not an amusement, and we certainly don't think we're like any of the rides at the Stratosphere, that gearing more towards amusement. But I understand that's an agree to disagree point. Some would say, even though, even if they would agree with me that this is a recreational facility, it still brings them the concerns that they raised for you tonight. We think that this facility will actually help the retail and restaurants along Sahara. The reason why is because it's a $3.1 million investment on Sahara. At a time when businesses are actually closing, we have a business that wants to open. We have a business that wants to open, invest over $3 million onto Sahara, and bring people there. Are the people that could drive there and be locals? Yes. Is the business model also to bring tourists there? I'm not going to shy away from that. Yes, that's a component of it as well. Either way, it's traffic to the area for the businesses, and they're also part of this neighborhood. You saw one of, or maybe you didn't see, but as I indicated earlier, one of the signatures in support is from Murray Callender's, a nearby restaurant. That is a business who would like to see more traffic generated in the area and in the neighborhood. With respect to the noise that this could generate, just down the way is a bar. I believe it's twenty-four hours. We're not proposing to be twenty-four hours, so we're certainly not, I don't know if the bar has any noise, but it is a twenty-four-hour use, and people could exit out of that place far later than we would be proposing to stay open. And I believe, if I didn't answer some of the questions, I'm sure you'll have questions for me to answer, but that kind of addressed a number of the points that I wanted to address tonight.
Thank you. Let me start off with a couple of comments. You know, the, one individual very articulately presented the argument that because the item or the project was withheld, you know, that shows its weakness. I don't see it that way. I think that what it shows is the strength of the process that the planning department has put together. And that is where, if objections come up to a project, we often require the proponents to go back and hold public meetings and address those concerns. And so that's a good thing. And it's not to be considered anything other than providing both sides the opportunity to talk out issues they might have concerning the project. Another thing that came up that I need clarification from staff on, and that was a comment that the access road alley, we've heard it called lots of things, but that the control of that goes along with the ownership of the property. And so we've got on one side of the street, the owner of the property is willing to paint the curb rub and deny parking along that narrow throat that goes into the areas. Where on the other side of the street, the owner of Tiger Lily has got red just to the fire hydrant, which would be required by certainly the fire department and various codes. And beyond that, it's at his discretion how it's used. He's elected to put in a parking spot there, which, in effect, if the owner of the property to the east elected to do something totally different, that person would be allowed to do that, and then you would really be in a bind. And if I understand correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know where Mr. Hunt's gone, but he owns the building that Tiger Lily's is in. And a portion of that building is apparently sublet to a restaurant. Is that, am I correcting that assumption? We can't hear you.
The owner of the building is Millard Sloan. He is here in the audience. We have rented space there for approximately thirty years.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were the owner of the property. That makes all the difference in the world. So we've got a tenant that is objecting. It's lessened your case. As a matter of fact, thank you for your honesty. You know, the one is willing to help, and the other, at this stage, seems to not be willing to help. I think that the applicant has addressed the noise issue. There would certainly be a concern, but I think that the condition that has been placed on the development addresses that there'll be no increase as a result in this development of this project to the noise level. So I think that is mitigated. The signage, I think, was a, was a good, was a good move, so that the residents to the north are not going to have to sit and look at some sign. I think that we've got a R25 project going on, what will be between this proposal and the houses that are currently in existence. So you've got a pretty good buffer zone that's going to be built with R25 is fairly significant density. And so that provides additional buffer. And, you know, the parking arguments, I think we can go on and on. You know, I think that at either seventy or seventy-five or a hundred dollars to participate in this activity is in and of itself going to be pretty much a limiting factor, is the number of people that are going to be there lined up to use it. You know, the utility of the building is an obvious valid point. I don't know what else it could be used for besides this type of facility. But then to say, well, there's a possibility that this is not going to work, and therefore, you know, we should, we should give that significant weight, you know, just any business that's going to be built has the potential to not work, whether it be a fast food restaurant that wants to put in a outdoor, or not an outdoor, but a drive-through lane, and banks that go in and put in all kinds of things like that. That's just part of the risk that businesses take. And I don't think that it's appropriate that we give that too much concern. It's the, you know, let the businessman take his risk, and if it works, great. And if it doesn't, maybe they have to take the thing down in order to sell the property for another use. I, it's not my worry tonight, I don't believe. That's, that's my thoughts on the matter at this point. Mr. Chairman? Please do.
First of all, I thank you, Ms. Lazovich. And just for a matter of disclosure, I took the opportunity to meet with Ms. Lazovich and the owner, Mr. Spear, in my office a month or so ago, and then most recently with Ms. Lazovich and her partner, Mr. Gronauer. And I also spoke with Mr. Hunt on the phone today. So just a matter of disclosure. I really just don't know where to begin. I'm perplexed and I'm disappointed by how this has become framed. The parking, the noise, the vibrations, the landscaping, I don't know. I mean, none of it is severe. I don't think this project is going to destroy that neighborhood, or it certainly won't be its savior either. What does concern me most of all is that it's in the redevelopment area. And you can call it what you want to call it. It's an amusement. It's an indoor amusement ride, if you want to call it recreational, whatever. It's, you can put a tilt-a-whirl in a building, it's still an amusement. The idea that I thought we had in the eight and a half years that I've been sitting up here was that we created and we expanded the redevelopment area with the hopes that it would attract other good businesses that would feed into the economy and to the neighborhoods. And this project, in my mind, absolutely doesn't even begin to come close to any of the goals that we have for redevelopment. Will it succeed? I don't know. But I spoke with you, Ms. Lazovich, and Mr. Spear in my office. We went over the numbers, and I said, they don't add up. You're going to spend three point some million dollars for this building at seventy bucks a pop with X amount per hour for the hours of operation. How are you going to make your debt service? And I said, my concern is, if you fail, it is our problem, in my mind, because the building cannot be repurposed. And I was hoping that I would get a very candid rebuttal and some assurances that that wouldn't happen, because I think the last thing we want is yet another vacant building. And Mr. Spear, your client said, that's my problem now, isn't it? And I didn't feel that that was a very appropriate response to what I think are legitimate concerns. And I didn't feel that that was a very appropriate response to what I think are legitimate concerns. I don't find any of this overly objectionable in terms of the specifics of the parking. Uh, I, I think it could be problematic. It doesn't meet our standard and I'm not quite sure why it can't be built to the standard where the variance wouldn't be needed. And I would like to hope that the people, many of whom spoke, I, I know many of them, I don't find them to be, um, objectionable or, or obstructionists. I, I think they're concerned about the community and they're absolutely concerned about the neighborhood, as am I, as I think we are. We're the planning commission. By granting this, will it mean that this guy, Mr. Spear, will succeed or not? I, I have no idea. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to solely look at an economic opportunity for somebody at the expense of what I think our redevelopment goals are. Will this bring in additional business? I, in my mind, all the years I've been up here, and I, and I go down that corridor all the time, I thought perhaps in, when, when the economy gets better, that there'll be urban lofts, there'll be mixed-use project. It's zoned, hard zoned for RPD 25 in the project, in the, in the space behind there. I don't know whether it will go RPD 25, but there are a multitude of opportunities for, for an office building, a mixed-use project, an urban loft-type situation, restaurants, retail. To put an amusement in the middle of all that, is somebody going to come in and buy the land and make that investment when that opportunity comes about? In my mind, it won't. I, I, I just see it as an amusement. And I'm, I'm incredibly disappointed that it's gotten framed in such a way where we have to take an applicant and do everything we can to ensure that his success, in my mind, could be at the detriment of others. And I feel strongly, we're the planning commission. We have to plan. We have to plan for the future, not just for tomorrow. And in my mind, I said, I went over this over and over again, and I said, what's going to happen in 10 years? Are they going to come back and say, what were they thinking? What were they thinking? They put all these amusements in these great urban areas that could, that had tremendous possibility. So, um, and I appreciate all of your efforts, Ms. Lazovich. You're probably one of the best law firms in town to represent a problematic application. The, it's infinitely better than it was two years ago. It's still essentially the same thing, but it looks a lot better, so I applaud you on that. I am concerned about the petitions. And is there any reason why this wasn't submitted sooner?
Only because we were working to, to get those signatures. You've been talking to businesses as early as this week.
Well, and, and I would respectfully indicate the tone of your letter, I would sign it. And I'm not sure it's an accurate representation of both sides of the issue. Obviously, you're not going to get people to, you know, not sign something, but essentially it says, because of unprecedented economic challenges, we think this will be a good project and, and fits well within the character of the commercial area and provide positive entertainment resource for visitors, locals, and youth. By signing below, you simply express your support of the project, et cetera. I don't think it's an accurate representation of what the project's consequences could be. So, those are my thoughts. I'm incredibly disappointed though because it's my area, it's my ward, it's my neighborhood, and we fight all the time. And I can't imagine this application being considered anywhere near other residential areas, anywhere else in this town. Granted Sahara is a commercial corridor, but it has tremendous possibilities. And I'm incredibly disappointed that we may be shortchanging ourself in terms of our future. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, for the record, need to mention that we did have 81 protests for this project, and I think we have 100 signatures in support of the project. So it's a clearly, you know, a fairly close decision. That's my point.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that's my point. I don't know where all these signatures come from. And I would hope that in the future, because on the application it says there are 54 protests, those are in our backup, and you can look through them and determine where those protests are. This is not the case. Those are the protests that the city sends out the card. This is the applicant's own.
That's a, a very, very valid point. Do you, do you have any way you could?
I do.
Show us where the supporters are, and we know where the, the opponents are, or we, I haven't said, I don't plotted a map though.
And, and my apologies, I meant to do this in, when I did my initial presentation, so my apologies specifically to Commissioner Evans for not showing this map. You know that we always do show maps.
I think they're all over the, they're all over the neighborhood, I'll grant you that.
Yeah, I, I indicated the boundaries, but then I didn't go and show you the, the map. And I'll show this one, and it's kind of tough to see, and then I'll lift it up and show you another one where we hand-colored it. But, um, just again, to, to go through the boundaries, what we thought was the relevant area, uh, it was Sahara, nothing south of Sahara, uh, so truly staying in the city. So Sahara, a few blocks west of Sixth Street to Maryland Parkway to Oki. That was the area that we, we.
I don't dispute that it's in the area, I just don't know whether there are apartments, but it's also.
Oh, no, and we did knock out apartments. I also clarified.
Mr. Chairman, through you, it's the, it's the wording of the application or of the petition. You've worded it in such a way, I would sign it. The other is the thing that comes from the city that has the specifics of the zoning. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Not, not to belabor the point, but, uh, the, the people that signed the petition had the opportunity to read the petition. Those that sent in cards of opposition, we have no way of knowing what they were told that caused them to feel that they needed to oppose it. Perhaps they were opposing it because of all the horrendous noise, all the vibrations, all the traffic, those kinds of things. You were going to comment more about that? I, I really couldn't see your map very well.
No, I just, I just thought the Commissioner Evans wanted me to show the map, but.
Please, I, I can't see it though.
Okay, so if you can go back to the aerial, uh, the red indicates, this is Sahara right here, uh, the red indicates where the support is coming from because that is such a dark map, I'm going to, this isn't going to be a lot better. But, um, if you can zoom in a little bit, you might be able to see the darker spots. This map represents what I indicated, which is Sahara's here, Oki's here, uh, this represents a couple of blocks west of Sixth Street, and then here's Maryland Parkway. And in green, you can start to see them as you've gotten closer. In green, we went and we highlighted corresponding to the people who signed, um, in green, who signed and where they lived within that area that we, uh, went out and talked to. They're homes, they're not apartments, and again, we, we did get some of the businesses as well.
Thank you. Chairman, or Commissioner, go ahead, you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm going to kind of be like Mr. Farlow, let's just get to the nuts and bolts because it all boiled down to, I believe, parking, but, um, just a couple of comments. While you could read that petition and, and interpret it any way you can, I could do the same thing with this engineering report, uh, from the engineer as, as well. Usually if you pay somebody to, 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 to do something in your favor, they come back with it. I know the traffic engineer went out and said there were so many cars around that place, but did you know, did you know for a fact that all those people parked there were in that business? And so that's what I'd like to say on that. Another thing I'd like to talk about is a bit about demographics. It was kind of interesting to see the neighbors come up and speak, and most of those that were opposed to it, and, um, how do I say it? I'll be 50 this year.
Be careful now.
And they look a little bit older and they wouldn't go in it. But what I did see is the young folks that came up, uh, the young vibrant folks, uh, those that I feel, uh, like Commissioner Evans said, um, the, the thought was that we were going to have lofts over here and we're going to have this great envisionment, and I think that meant the young urban professional was going to move downtown and, and utilize these type of uses. I think that's the person that's going to use this, that has that discretionary income to, uh, be a young attorney, to say, hey, after, after hours, let's go over to Marie Callender's, Tony Roma's, um, let's, let's, um, let's utilize this facility and spend money within the area. But we deal with a lot of what-ifs, and everything here tonight is, what if it doesn't fail? You know, everybody was to the negative. And I think if you listen to the mayor's speech last night at the State of the City address, one of the things he focused on was being positive. And he came right out and he used a term from James Brown, "I feel good." And I'm going to use that same term tonight. I feel good about supporting this because not only do we need to do things at this time, especially in the redevelopment area, and the mayor did an eloquent presentation using a graphic chart to show from a flat line that if you put and reseed in these redevelopment areas, it will only go good from there. And, and I think that's where we're at, at this point along this, this corridor. I heard people say, well, we don't, what is it going to do for our neighborhood? I don't know what else to tell you if, if somebody's coming in your neighborhood and they're going to spend between, uh, 70 to 75 dollars for three minutes to look at the movie, and then you have to spend up to 150 to fly around in the place, and then you get off of there and go get a meal at a Tony Roma's. You may stop by the flower shop, like the gentleman said, and get a flower for your girlfriend. If, if the conversation gets any better, you may go next door to the gentleman's jewelry shop and buy her engagement ring. I don't know, that to me looks like a 1,500 or $2,000 evening right in your neighborhood. And who would not want that? So with that, the nuts and bolts of this are down to the parking. Staff didn't deny this because it wasn't a proper use in the area, it was because of the parking variance. So they feel, I don't speak for staff, but it does not deny because of that. My concerns, and I, and I wanted to ask Ms. Lazovich again, and, and I wanted to hear from her consultant on the noise, if, I think you said he is here?
Yes.
And I wanted to hear, how did he go about that? What are the specific decibel levels? While he was out there, did he, did he take a measurement on what the current decibel levels are with the traffic, uh, the noise that comes up and down that boulevard, and how much is this going to impact? That's what I want. And, and once I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, I think this is a great project for this area. That's what I'd like to hear, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Todd McBryr. I work for Breslin Builders. I'm the designer on the project as well as working with the applicant to work through some of these other issues, specifically the sound. If you look at your monitor there, you'll notice two different tools that we put together. The first one, let's look at the map, and you'll, you'll notice four different colored dots, each one labeled L1, L2, L3, and L4.
It's better.
The bigger one. Our concern when we met with the first neighborhood meeting was, the noise obviously came up. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be a contributing factor to additional noise in the area. Well, with any sound study, you want to make sure what's out there and understand those existing levels already. So we went through, and you notice on the map, we have L1, which is out by Sahara. Now, we all know that Sahara is a, a major thoroughfare through the city of Las Vegas from east to west. So there's a significant amount of traffic. It's a hundred-foot right-of-way, uh, so morning and night, you're going to have an amount of traffic that runs through there, plus we're, you know, within a half a mile of Las Vegas Strip. L2 puts us further into the site. That was just to see how much of that sound, the, the noise level from Sahara comes into the site. L3 gets us on the other side of the existing office building that's part of our project to see, again, further how much that sound comes in, but also how much that sound starts affecting the neighborhood behind us. Because that building that's there, that existing dental office, will become part of a buffer zone for sound, uh, for our project to some extent. And then what's not shown on there is L4. At the end of the cul-de-sac, um, we took some readings at the end of the cul-de-sac to ensure that we knew how the Sahara traffic, uh, which were some interesting findings, as well as the, the traffic in the area beyond Sahara, how it affected the neighborhoods at the end there. So we had some baselines to work with before we agreed to the conditions that we put upon ourselves for that.
So what decimal, decimal, what, what number are we at on, on the decimals?
Um, I believe the traffic study was, or the sound level study was submitted as part of the record in that there is a chart. It's not focused too well, but you can see on here, what we did is at each level, at certain times of the day, we went through and took readings across these four different locations. And to make sure that we were getting a fair average, uh, we took morning, lunchtime, evening time, and nighttime readings at various times throughout a number of days. Each one of those locations, the sound meter that we were using, does a 30-second average of sound. So it's not just going out there, hit the button and get, you know, a big bus passing by or nothing passing by. In that 30-second average, there's a considerable amount of traffic that changes across there to make sure that we're not, um, influencing our numbers one way or another. In addition to that, you can see that we have multiple readings. So not only am I doing a 30-second average, but I'm doing it multiple times at that same location. So we took three separate readings at that same location at the same time, and then averaged those together at each time.
So let me ask you this, or Ms. Lazovich, when that wind tunnel's fired up and it's, it's cranking, what's the decibel level that, that it's giving out?
Now, the sound, I was just hearing of the decibel.
If I may address that, the interior level, which has been based on existing, um, locations, at the, the center point of that wind tunnel is 120 decibels. As it dissipates out, the entire interior surface of that concrete wall is about 115 decibel levels. That's the fan, that's the, the air movement around, that's what we're anticipating on the inside. Now, it's been mentioned before that we have a 12-inch-thick concrete wall, normal-weight concrete reinforced, that will run from the basement level, and we're using a mat footing to put this thing on, and then running that concrete all the way up with a concrete roof to put this thing in place, to fully encapsulate it. A concrete wall will give you a sound deadening of approximately 63 at 12 inches thick. So you go from 120 minus out to 63, the exterior surface of that wall, you're already at a 57 decibel level, even before you start moving away from the building. So sound has already dropped down to 57. As you start moving further away.
So you could, so you could, is it true to say then that on some of those, and Ms. Lazovich, what are the hours of operation going to be, by the way?
Uh, we're proposing 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
So on, on a peak day on Sahara, moving up and down, is that traffic, is that traffic, how much decibel is that traffic generating?
Well, let, let's go through some of the average readings here at that L1 spot out there on Sahara. At 12:40 PM, this is in October 14th, the average was 78. At 5:08 PM, it was 67. At 10:30 PM, it was 73. Moving to the next morning, at 7:55 AM, 69. 1:45 PM, 69. 5:45 PM, 66. As it, as it worked, the average morning decibel level was 70. And midday was 70, evenings was 69, and nighttime was 69. So Sahara produces a significant amount of noise that already has an impact in that area. And that's why it's, it's safe for us to say that based on how we're constructing this building and the, the, uh, systems that we're putting into this, which all add cost, but we want to make sure that we're not having an impact on the neighborhood, are in fact going to do their job. 12 inches of concrete will sound dead and any noise that's going to be in there.
Thank you.
If I may continue.
Yes, go ahead.
Sound levels at that L4 spot at the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, you have a range in the morning of 60, afternoon was 59, 58 in the, uh, evening time, and at nighttime it was 57. So we're not talking about, you know, a suburban environment here. This is an urban environment that has sounds from traffic, from, you know, overhead, um, influences from helicopters, airplanes, things like that. It's got sound from the stratosphere, sound from.
Excuse me, are you saying that the sounds, the natural sounds will drown out any sound, the ambient noise or whatever, will drown out any additional noise?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Quinn, did you have a thought or?
Um.
Commissioner Quinn, if I could, one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Lazovich, I, I, one more question. I kept hearing about. I kept hearing about gaming district, and I heard what the attorney said. Is there gonna be gaming at this site?
Absolutely not. There's no gaming. I should also mention that there's no alcohol, and there's no food. I mean, there might be a vending machine for Coke, or, you know, M&amp;M's or something, but there's no actual food preparation, alcohol, or gaming.
Like, any nice smelling flowers in the lobby, maybe from the Tiger Lily?
Terry wants that.
I just have a brief comment, Commissioner. I think what I like the most about this project is that, being that I grew up in this area many years ago, and I've seen so many people leave this area and move to the outskirts of the city and all over the place, people don't even know about Tony Roma's, or the Tiger Lily, or Marie Callender's, or any of these places. And I think that once people, like these young people here pointed out very vibrantly and really got my attention, is, once people, I'm not talking about tourists, but once people start coming to this location to enjoy this facility, they're gonna go, "My goodness, I didn't know there was a Tony Roma's here, or an old Heidelberg here, or a Marie Callender's here, or this here." And I feel in my heart that it's going to revitalize the entire area around it. Nobody knows that the Rainbow's Inn's been there since I was a little girl, where we get sandwiches and our vitamins. And I just think it's gonna bring people back, and it's gonna bring people to an area that I used to think was the center of town, that is no longer the center of town. I commend you, Ms. Lazovich, on your hard work of promoting this project. I wanna say for the record that I did meet with you, and I've read all the backup material against it. And I'm going along with my colleagues, Mr. Goines. I'm excited, and I don't wanna look at something and say, "What's gonna happen if it fails?" Because we could've said about Caesar's Palace, "What are we gonna do at the OmniMax if it fails? You know, who's gonna buy, you know, Center City if it fails?" We don't wanna talk about failing right now. We wanna talk about opening something, making it successful, and making it for every person around that area better. And I wish you a lot of luck, and you have my support.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
I have some questions. Looking at the parking, is there gonna be a time when you're gonna have three hundred people in that building?
No, because we can't, no. We couldn't, what I've been told by Gary Spear, and we addressed this when we were in one of the neighborhood meetings, he couldn't physically handle that. Number one, from a competition standpoint, which I addressed earlier, but number two, because we can only handle sixteen people an hour, you would have a lot of people just sitting around. And that's a lot of people to just sit around and do nothing for several hours to wait their turn. So it just, it can't happen. I mean, that's why we went through the numbers and the people per hour.
So, so that, all right, so what, and the noise, if I understood, Commissioner Evans' question was, the existing noise level will drown out any additional noise that this, I have a hard time believing that. I mean, it's gonna generate some noise. We know that right outside the cylinder, the twelve-inch-thick walled cylinder, it's only about sixty decibels, if I understood his analysis correctly. And then my guess is you get further and further away, that decibel level's gonna get lower and lower, but it's gonna add something to the noise level, isn't it? I mean, you're not saying this is gonna be silent. If I'm out in front of the building, I'm gonna hear something when those engines are running, right? Or is it absolutely silent?
If I may address that. Interesting thing with sound in that, if you think that I've got sixty decibels and I've got sixty decibels, you add them together, you know, math says a hundred and twenty. It doesn't work that way. Because they're the same, they are gonna contribute, if I was sixty and sixty, to about sixty-three. There's a scale that as, the more the decibel swing is, the bigger sound will take effect.
Okay. So it will contribute, but it's gonna contribute just a small amount, is basically what I'm hearing.
Exactly. And that's right outside the building. As you get a hundred feet away, you know, if we all know sound, sound waves get bigger and bigger and bigger, so there's a diminishing factor on that. As you get five hundred feet away, which is where our residential is, you're going five hundred. That sound has to travel five hundred feet. There's nothing for it to bounce off of. It's just gonna eventually disappear.
And then vibrations. Did I understand you to say that there will be no vibrations in the ground, the neighbors don't have to worry about any vibrations coming from this building? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes. The issue's with vibration. First off, we're gonna put this on a mat footing, mat concrete footing, similar to what is used in a high-rise facility, not only to support the structure, but also anchored in the ground. We have twelve inches of concrete that this is going to be housed in, which will take some of the vibration also. But the thing that's creating the vibration the most is the motor and the propeller. If you think about spending a lot of money on a motor and a propeller, and then having people, you know, skydive underneath it, the last thing you want is that propeller to start vibrating and become an issue. So we're gonna put isolation pads up on the roof, on top of that twelve inches of concrete. This'll sit on its own concrete pad with springs, and then the machine itself has sensors in it to prevent it from overvibrating, to protect the equipment. You're not gonna spend a lot of money on a machine and let it destroy itself.
Got it. All right, so now back to the parking, because I see two issues here. One is parking, and the other one is the SDR for the development. And the SDR, what everybody's been focused on here, does this fit within the community? Is it contrary to what we are wanting and have planned for that area? But parking, I don't see that as a problem, if I understand correctly, because although we require it based on the square, the overall footprint of the building, if you peel it back to what really is being utilized, how many people are gonna be there, I think you're gonna have plenty of parking for the location. So then the issue comes back to the SDR. Landscape is not an issue either, right? Because although, although we have, you're asking for a zero lot line, you're actually gonna be putting landscaping in on each of those key areas. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. We are gonna, if you can go back to the overhead. We are gonna be putting landscaping on the east side, the west side, and the south side. The area that we can't, just functionally, is on the north because it would be in the middle of an existing parking lot. One comment I wanna make on the south side that staff brought to my attention. Right now, just to the east of us, there is a very wide, I don't know how wide it is, but maybe over ten feet wide sidewalk that exists right here as you go west. We had proposed to put landscaping within that same area. So there is some discussion about, do we keep that, the wide sidewalk? Do we extend out to do landscaping to here? Of course, still maintaining a sidewalk, it would just be smaller in width. We're willing to do either one, but we certainly are, in either case, providing landscaping on the south. It just depends on whether or not you wanna match the existing sidewalk, put that area into landscaping, and then have a smaller sidewalk out closer to Sahara.
I'm all for the additional landscaping if it matters to you, Ms... Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Truesdale, do you have a comment? And if not, I think we're ready for a motion.
I have a couple of comments, just very brief. One, I do own property west of this site, along Las Vegas Boulevard. I think I've disclosed that before, and I'll disclose it again. It has no effect on how I view this development. I've heard a lot about what the neighbors want this area to be, and this offices, retail, and I'm a believer that if you're gonna get a very vibrant urban retail development that is successful, it is a combination of all of these factors. Office, retail, restaurants, recreational issues. When the development across the street was at its absolute prime years ago, and some of the residents remember it, with, Commercial Center had a big Q-Ville, or Q-whatever it was, pool hall, it had Golden Venus, which was a spa that tourists and locals would flock to, and in many restaurants. It had a concert venue in the old Las Vegas Ice Palace, which was good and bad at times. But I think you've got Lethberby's across the street, you've got the Eureka Small Neighborhood Casino, you've got Marie Callender's, Tony Roma's. Tiger Lily's has been a phenomenal fixture in that neighborhood and is, if I thought this was gonna affect them, I probably would look at this project differently. When it first came in with very big waivers on parking, I said, "No." The applicant went back and did a lot of different things that made this project workable. So it wasn't what I thought an impact. I know Mr. Zarowski's been there for a long time, he's got a beautiful building, and this is not the same architecture, nor would I expect every building to be the exact same architecture in there. But as, I think Commissioner Goines said, and the mayor made a great point, this is a time to be positive about things and look forward. You know, it is a subtly different world today, and I look at this as a long-term planning. And I think this project will fit within an urban village, which is, I think, what was originally envisioned by the retail and commercial plan that Beverly Green had, and the residents around this area had discussed. So in that regard, I am gonna support this item. And I can tell you, it's a very difficult decision, because both the gentlemen at Tiger Lily have been long-term friends of my family's, and I know this, they have a view of what this may or may not affect their business, but I believe it actually has a potential to improve that area beyond what it is today. So I will support this item.
Chairman, I wanted to make one final, brief comment, something to think about between now and City Council. I am concerned about the sustainability aspects. No mention has been made of the electrical needs, whether it's gas, or propane, or electric. I'd be curious about how much is generated in order to make this happen. But I would be remiss if I just didn't make one final remark, and that is, I absolutely, in my mind, this is an amusement. It's an indoor amusement ride, and I think it's a slippery slope. If we believe that their amusement rides should be in the resort or in the redevelopment area, then so be it, but I absolutely vehemently object to that.
Mr. Chairman, before the motion, I was just perusing the audience, and I kinda saw Mr. Delakonakis and Joan L. Thomas stand up here and say how passionately they were about their neighborhood, and I don't see 'em now.
They, Mr. Goines, they go home, they have kids. They've been coming down here for eight and a half years that I've been here, on behalf of their neighborhood. It's not gonna change their vote that they went home to be with their kids. The fact that they come out over and over and over passionately for their neighborhood speaks volumes for them.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion now. Someone be cared of.
Mr. Chairman, on item six, VAR 35528, move for approval subject to staff's recommendations and condition.
Clerk, my computer's shut off. So, I mean, I can voice vote, it's fine either way.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Please post. Good luck posting that verbal vote.
Item seven, SDR 35186, move for approval subject to staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made.
And those include the revised conditions read-in?
Ms. Wheeler?
There were modifications made by planning staff, and then one additional condition, that the existing property line creating the rear parcel shall be eliminated, and that all parking required for the proposed use must be provided on the same side as the use, except that for which a variance is approved.
I offer that motion of approval with amended conditions and addition.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Verbal vote? Please post. Motion carries.
And both items go forward to the City Council on February seventeenth.
I'd like to call a brief bio-recess.[1443.62]
Excuse me, how long do we have to feed the meter on here? We're putting quarters in the meter.
I'm sorry, how long?
How long? How long is it required?
Do you need, how long does the meter?
We don't want a ticket.
I don't think, I don't think they, is there a marshal? Let me ask the officer. When you came in, was there a marshal?
Nobody was around. We got a shot away in. Not me, nobody, nobody. Because one lady's been sick too. That's what I was going to do. Oh, thank you, I'm going to go.
I thought I would, my seven o'clock, I was going to be open.
He watched it on TV for like, was it flying, and I see it, it's cloudy.
I have to walk it.
Oh, oh, we have to keep these curricular things, your awareness shifts, that's how old that thing is.
Real restricted, they wouldn't take any of us. You have to go to your area, if you're not allowed.
String under power. Add more power.
Let's go, where's Steve? I think we're ready to begin. As soon as I put my glasses on. Okay, now we can start with item number nine and companion item number 10. Item number nine is variance 36808. The applicant is The Smog Shop LLC. The owner is James C. Bracken and Nancy Bracken. Is to allow 551 parking spaces, where 550 spaces are required for a proposed 120-square-foot auto smog check at the northwest corner of Rancho Road and Alexander Road. And item number 10 is the special use permit 36809, is for a proposed 120-square-foot auto smog check with no stacking lane. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for an auto smog check to be located within a larger commercial subdivision that is already parking impaired. The proposed use will occupy two existing spaces, and will require two additional spaces to accommodate the smog check activities. The increase in the parking requirement by four spaces to accommodate the proposed use has resulted in the variance request. A special use permit is required for the use, as the conditional use regulations regarding the size of the facility and the provision of a vehicular stacking lane cannot be met. Staff is recommending denial of both the variance and special use permit requests, as the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses, and the subject site is not physically suitable to accommodate the intensity of the use. Furthermore, the applicant has provided no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance that would substantiate the need for the variance request. Please note that one letter of support was received for each of these items after publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and ask anyone wishing to speak on the item, approach the microphone and give your name for the record. For the applicant?
Yes, I'm Dawn Young. I live at 5888 Castleberry Peak. And I'm the owner of The Smog Shop. The owners that are listed on here, James and Nancy Bracken, are retired and live in Utah. And they are the owners of the Corner Market and Sinclair Gas Station. The parking variance is four spots over an 18-acre subdivision. I have a drawing, not as fancy as the last people's stuff, but...
Sure it's easier to understand, though.
That shows, they, this is the existing market. This is the gas pumps. And over here in the corner of the parking lot is where we propose putting The Smog Shop. It's only 120 square feet. It takes one and a half parking spots, so two spots. And there are 22 parking spots in the gas station itself, which is less than 3,000 square feet. Over this 18-acre subdivision, there are currently over four acres that are vacant lots. The building next door to the gas station, directly to the west, is a church that's only occupied on Sundays. And so, all of the parking that was built for that church is there and vacant all week.
Are you going to be operating on Sundays?
We're planning to be. But if it's a problem, and if they're going to recommend that we not receive approval, we don't need to be open on Sunday. Or maybe we can open after church is over. But this is four parking spots over 18 acres.
Okay. That's your presentation?
Yeah, I'm not a professional lawyer or anything like that. I'm just a person, so...
We don't need to have another lawyer make a two-hour presentation. Anyone else, attendants, wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and turn it over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
A couple of clarifications. I've been out there, I live fairly close by, so I know fairly well what the parking is like. And I don't anticipate the parking being an issue at all.
No.
Even if church is in session on Sunday, that's not going to be an issue, because all the other businesses, most of them are closed.
Yes, sir.
So, I don't see there being a problem. I just have a couple of questions. The building, I see in the back up, it's going to be a stucco building, right? It's going to look good. I don't want some junk sitting there. It's going to be a stucco building to match, right?
Yes, sir. It's going to match the existing convenience store.
And the type of roof on it, is it, what type of roof is on that?
On the convenience store, she has a flat roof, and she has a copper cupola on top.
Okay.
They're not going to do that. We're going to do a shingle roof that's compatible with the stucco colors.
And when you say shingle, we talking about ceramic shingles? We talking about like a...
Yes.
Okay, I don't want any asphalt shingles in there.
No, sir.
It's going to look nice, it'll fit that environment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, if there are no other comments by the commissioners, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval. Any other comments? I move for approval of item number nine, subject to the conditions of staff.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries, in regards to item number 10.
One last question. Are you going to be smogging just gas vehicles?
Yes, sir, just gasoline, not diesel.
Okay, that's a bummer, but okay.
So, you just have the one computer that's inside the building?
That's why I was asking the question. Likewise, for number 10, I'll vote for, I mean, my motion is for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. That carries.
And both items go forward to the city council at their meeting of February 17.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item number 11 and companion item number 12. Item number 11 is variance 36906. The applicant owner is the Clark County School District. Is to allow an existing six-foot chain-link fence, where a six-foot screen wall is required along the east property line at 408 Upland Avenue. And item number 12, the site development review, 36550, for a proposed 22-space parking lot addition at an existing public school, primary with a waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements, to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the east perimeter, where 15 feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, currently the site is, this portion of the site is fallow and has been undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to install a parking lot with none of the required buffering materials to buffer the residents to the east. Staff is not supporting the lack of buffering of landscaping or the wall itself, as required by Title 19, and recommends denial. Please note, we've received additional protests and support since publication.
Thank, I think we'll, okay, we can hold that question for one second. Like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Clayton Nielsen, 57, 55 South Sand Hill Road, Suite B. I'm here representing the Clark County School District. I'm actually the engineer that put these plans together and prepared the application. Just to give a little history on the project, how this came about was, we were contracted by the Clark County School District to do some rehab work at this school. Most of it being resurfacing of the playground areas, and then they also needed to provide fire access to the back part of the school. It was a requirement that came out from the City of Las Vegas Fire Department. So, by doing that, we needed to create a driveway cut back here to provide access to the back area. Big reason being is the, this one building back here is, in this back area right here, it's sprinkled and has a FDC in that, and the fire department didn't have access to it, so they wanted that. So, in doing this, the school district then approached... In doing this, uh, the school district then approached us and says, "Well, if we're going to do this, uh, can we look at adding some parking?" Being, you know, because this is an older school. Back in the old day, they didn't need all the parking like they do now with the number of students in that. They have these schools and teachers, they're... They always end up being deficient on the parking. So, they looked, um... They looked at adding parking here where they could. So, that's when we, uh, then came forth with the SDR, submitted on that. And upon submitting it, we were, um, requested to add a block wall and then the landscaping. Couple items to... just to note, um, as far as... Relevant in regards to the, uh, the block wall and the landscaping in this area. Right along here, there's an existing six-inch sewer that serves that building. There's also a six-inch fire main and a two-inch domestic service. All of these serving that... in that area, so that in order to install the landscaping and the, uh, the block wall would require relocation of all those utilities. Primarily, you know, which water typically is not an issue, but sewer then becomes an issue. And because of the grade out here, then we would no longer be able to sewer this building. Thus making that building useless.
One question.
Yes.
What's the estimated cost of these improvements? These extra improvements that you're talking about?
Uh, for the parking area?
Uh, no, for the fence and relocating these utilities and all this other stuff?
Oh, if we had to relocate the utilities and that, uh, and the block wall, all that, you're probably looking about $600,000.
This has been a school for how long?
Uh, since like 1950 something. I mean, it was before the Clark County School District became...
Tracy Murphy, Clark County School District, 4190 McLeod. This school was built in 1955 and the school has been in existence since then. There was one improvement built on the school and that improvement was done in 1992. So, these are the most recent improvements and rehabilitation for the school that have been done since then. So this is a very, very old school.
Thank you.
Please continue.
So, so, uh... So that's the reason we came forth with the, uh, with the variance on the landscaping requirements and also the block wall was because of the existing utilities being in that area. Uh, we did... we did conduct a neighborhood meeting last week with, uh... And the neighbors were all notified. We had three people that showed up and just so that the planning commissioners aware. Their biggest concern was just about parking lot lighting. That being their big concern, they had issues about it being lighted. At this time, it is not going to be lighted, it's more of an overflow. Would only be used during school hours. Another thing I wanted to note too that wasn't shown on... in the application when we originally submitted was a, uh... A gate here at the driveway, which would limit access after hours and that too. We added that since then, so that it would become secured and after hours it would not be, you know... So, if people wanted to just hang out there, park whatever, they couldn't do that, it would be secured.
I would like to add that the reasoning for the parking was that we're aware that at schools, parking is an issue and it continues to be an issue. We did tell the neighbors, which is correct, that this parking area is not designed for parent drop-offs, for high-traffic area, for buses. So this area is primarily for overflow parking for the teachers. And it... we added parking there in order to just alleviate some of the parking, which seems to be an issue frequently.
And two other items I wanted to know. Uh, one... one item was being, uh, was in the staff report. It was written that, uh, that if this was denied, that, um, development would... in this area wouldn't occur. And I just wanted to note, it will still occur because we have to provide the access for the fire department. That's the only area we can provide access from.
How does the access now?
They don't. They have no access back there.
So they have a sprinkled building, but...
Yeah, and no access. And that's the reason this all came about, was they were mandated by the fire department to put these improvements in and... So...
It's the driveway.
And then the other item to note was, um... Was also on the SDR on item 14, Public Works had required a technical drainage study to be on this. And we'd like to at least request that we have the opportunity, in lieu of that, to meet with staff and determine if a requirement for one would be required or not. Because the school's all developed, everything's there. I mean, we're not changing drainage patterns or anything like that. We're not going to impact the drainage in the area, so...
We'll give the staff a minute to think about it before we ask for a response. But in the interim, I'd like to offer the... the opportunity to Commissioner Goins to make a comment.
I just want to disclose on the record that I am a licensed substitute teacher with the school district, but this will not affect my vote in any way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I... I was out there today and, um, I... I noticed first and foremost that you are even sharing parking with the Red Rock Baptist Church next door, um, Upland, and then I went down Mayflower. And, um, there's absolutely no way a fire truck could get into that property if it had come in through the back or if there was any... any type of disaster. Um, unfortunately, I... I always usually agree with... with staff, but to move all those utilities and to move those things is just not, um, feasible. I mean, and I believe that the Clark County School District has plenty of experience in building it the right way and doing it the right way so that it's going to make the children safer and bring you up to the fire code. Um, most times, the landscaping would be a big deal, but in this circumstance, I think that, um, we owe it to you for being there so long and, um, so successful with so many children. The place was packed. I mean, I was there at like 1:30 today, 2 o'clock. And, um, there's no way I could go against your application because I know you're going to bring it up to the best of code at the best of your ability within your budget. And, um, I will be supporting this project today. Uh, you know, with whatever else my colleagues have to say, because, um, I'm very familiar with that school. And, um, I know you're in difficult situations, sir.
Okay, let me go ahead and complete my ministerial functions here and...
Yes, sir.
Any of the... the public hearing is now open. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and allow the... I'm going to filibuster a while here, while you get back to your chair. Okay. Now I ask the people in Public Works, is the issue of the, uh, the drainage study something that could be worked out at staff level later?
It probably could. I was talking to Mr. Nielsen here earlier and typically on a site that has more than two acres, we ask for a drainage study. If, I guess, what I'd like to do, if this is not going to city council, I could... I can prepare some, um, language, an alternative language. So if it's... it doesn't sound like it's going to city council, so I'll... I can read in some alternative language.
Okay, you want to think about it for a second while I, uh...
I talked about... I talked to him about it, so I'm ready. I'm prepared to share that.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Just on...
Suggest another condition.
Mm-hmm. There'll be, at the end of condition 14, just amending it to add the following. Alternatively, meet with the flood control section of the Department of Public Works to determine an acceptable alternative, if any, to the drainage plan and technical drainage study. And what this allows is, I kind of think our drainage people will just say, write a letter and that will... And that was his concern, was that they will have him do a full-blown drainage study, you know, 20-page study and obviously a lot of work for him. I think he can get away with just a letter. And that's... I think that's the intention of our flood control group. So this alternative allows him to work with them and if... if that's not the case, they'll still have to do a study.
Okay, and that would be a modification to, uh, agenda item 12, the site development review, item 14.
Correct.
Okay, the public hearing has been closed and we now turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you. Um, I... I'd like to make a motion for approval of, uh, variance 39... uh, 36-906 with, uh, staff's recommendations on that, please.
Motion's been made for item 11. Please cast your votes.
And on item number, uh...
Hang on, let's... let's record. The motion carries now on the number 12.
And on item number 12, um, I'd like to make a motion for approval of SDR 36-550, adding, um, a condition to number 14 by Public Works, uh, with the rest of staff's recommendations. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. That motion squeaks by.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 13, special use permit, 36-562. The applicant is Hyam Gabay, the owner of the Fremont Associates Inc. for a packaged liquor off-sale establishment within an existing 8,152 square foot retail establishment at 300 Fremont Street. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a special use permit to allow packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing retail establishment. The packaged liquor off-sale use will be operated in conjunction with the existing retail establishment. And the sale of packaged liquor is consistent with previous approvals in the area, meets all minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner within the existing retail establishment and with similar uses along Fremont Street. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Please note that two protests and one letter of support have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Sir?
My name is Albert Gabay. I represent my brother, Hyam Gabay. Uh, we have the store on 300 Fremont Street and we like... we applied to get, uh, alcohol license because we like to increase the business.
Thank you. And you'll accept the conditions as presented by staff?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. The public hearing is open, so anyone else wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I went down there today and it runs a class business. I think your justification letter speaks. I want to ask staff, what was the nature of the protest? Just two cards. But with that, I'll make a motion for approval of SUP 36-562, subject to all staff's recommendation conditions.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to the city council at their meeting of February 17.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now move to item number 14, which is a special use permit, 36-779. The applicant is Nevada City Partners LLC. Owner is Pac Pro Service LLC for a proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment within an existing 2,032 square foot convenience store and a waiver to allow a 120-foot distance separation from a childcare facility where 400 feet is required at 4401 East Bonanza Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for a special use permit for beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing convenience store. The proposed use is located approximately 116 feet from a childcare facility, which fails to meet the minimum special use permit distance separation requirement of 400 feet from the protected use. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that five protests have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name for the records.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Roberts, Lionel Sawyer and Collins, 300 South Fourth Street. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, Nevada City Partners. Uh, they are looking for a special use permit to sell beer and wine at a city stop convenience store on Bonanza and Lamb, on the southeast corner of Bonanza and Lamb, in the Cardenas Shopping Center. Uh, it is a... currently a vacant boarded-up property. There is... it used to be a convenience store that sold alcohol and gasoline. It has the pumps in place already, but it is vacant right now. The... there was a special use permit on this property that would allow alcohol sales, but due to some delays with finding a tenant and, uh, getting the lease agreements together, the special use permit expired one month after we filed the application. There is a daycare, uh, I understand, in the area. Uh, it is across the street, uh, from the location, so that's across from Lamb, which is a six-lane highway with a... or a six-way lane right-of-way with a median involved. And that is a 100-foot right-of-way, which, under our current, uh, the City of Las Vegas code, does allow for a waiver of the separation to the childcare facility. There is a convenience store next to the childcare facility that, um, is on the opposite side of our convenience store, our proposed convenience store. So, we would just ask that the... since the code does allow for a waiver of the separation, it is adequately buffered by the 100-foot right-of-way. Um, this does not serve the same lane and direction of traffic that, um, the other convenience stores do. So, and it's located within the market area, heavily concentrated commercial, um, center right there on Bonanza and Lamb. So we respectfully request your support for this application.
Thank you. Public hearing's open, anyone wishing to speak?
My name is Chris Robbins and I reside at 4513 Prince Carey Court, which is not too far away from the site in question. For the record, I spell my name a little bit differently. It's K-R-I-S-R-O-B-I-N-S. The, uh, the site in question, uh, formerly, uh, where she mentioned is Cardenas, uh, was formerly Albertson's business. This area has already received, uh, one exemption previously, where in the northeast, uh, part of the property, uh, some additional buildings were built, taking up parking space. My objection to this is the, um, impact right now. And if we could put up a map of the area in question, um, immediately behind, uh, the previous map, before that, please.
Location map, please.
There we go. If you look at the area immediately behind, uh, the supermarket area, uh, this will be Diamond Head. Traffic through this area and around the supermarket, uh, is absolutely phenomenal. Between the hours of about 09:00 in the morning until about 17:00 hours in the evening. It is intense and wall-to-wall. There are no parking spaces left. None. It's that bad. Uh, since I live in Prince Carey, uh, just a couple blocks to the south of Diamond Head there and somewhat, uh, east of Lamb there, my wife and I frequently, uh, the pharmacy there. And subsequently, we have to walk there. We can't drive there. We cannot hit this place on the way home from work. Cardenas has been a phenomenal success since they moved in and took over the property once, uh, occupied by Albertson's. And they've been a phenomenal success there. To add another business at that corner there will exacerbate an already bad traffic situation in the fact that there is no parking. I can state for a fact in conversations with CVS employees, uh, which occupied, uh, a portion of the building that they're located in, they are now at the point of butting heads with Cardenas over parking for their patrons. Now, I don't mind the walk personally, but the traffic, again, I can only emphasize the traffic in this area is now so bad. And I regret I missed out on last, uh, planning commission meeting. I... is it... There are plans to, just a little further down Bonanza as you move east from the intersection to, uh, Clark, uh, for, um, City of Las Vegas Fire Department, a station to be built. Does anybody know about that? Is this still on?
You guys ring a bell with me?
All right.
Yes, that station was approved at the corner of Bonanza and Page. Bonanza and Page.
Okay.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think the issue is, should they be allowed to serve beer and wine at the convenience store? Right? And I'm not clear. I'm assuming you're objecting to that, but I, you're not telling me why.
You are correct. I do object to it for the simple reason there is no parking left for any purpose whatsoever. Already, the pharmacy is butting heads with the supermarket, to the point that, I realize this is anecdotal, but I saw corporate types there one day, and they were definitely surveying the situation and looking at it in detail. So obviously, this is of some concern to them, and of course, it's a great inconvenience to residents of the area who must utilize its services. Add to that that Bonanza and Lamb is a major intersection, and there's a proposed fire station going down the street, and now you have to install control lights so that the fire apparatus can egress and, you know, enter, you know, the station house there. I can only imagine what this is going to become. It's already a bad situation. It's only going to get worse. So that is my principal objection to this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Mr. Farlow?
Yes. Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Years ago, when Albertson's requested this gas stop out here, it seems to me that they wanted liquor, or beer and wine sold out of there, and it was denied. Am I right on that?
No. I'm way too young to know that.
Have to go back a long time here.
I...
Well, some of the Commission, Commissioner, you were, you were here at that time, and Commissioner Tru...
Probably wasn't buying beer by then, but...
Yeah, but...
My thought is...
But didn't they, didn't they request, didn't they request to sell beer and wine, and we said...
Apparently, and maybe Ms. Roberts can clarify this, they were approved to sell beer and wine.
Oh, they were approved?
Yes.
Yes, there was a special use permit in place.
And it's expired, and this is, has to come forward again for our consideration because it expired.
My thing was, if we didn't allow Albertson's to do it, I wouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be allowed now, but if they were allowed to.
Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions, I do understand the neighbors' concerns about traffic, but this is an existing building that will open up as a convenience store and be a retail operation, whether they sell beer and wine out of it or not, and I think the center, while there may be success in Cardenas, I think this facility has the right to operate a business in that center. With regard to special use permit, I think the applicant is asking for something that is compatible with similar type uses, so I'll make a motion for approval following off staff's recommendations.
And might I ask, there are six recommendations for approval, and I'm assuming the applicant agrees with all of those?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. The motion carries.
That goes forward to the City Council on February 17.
We now move to item number 15, which is a special use permit 36782. The applicant is SB Las Vegas LLC. The owner is Summerhill Plaza Partners LLC for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 2,560 square foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 115-foot distance separation from a city park, where 400 feet is required at 7541 West Lake Mead Boulevard, suite number 110. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff is supporting the waiver as the park is located across Lake Mead Boulevard, which is 100-foot arterial. Also, this is onsite consumption of alcohol and not an offsite situation, and staff feels as though that use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the other uses in the area. Staff also notes that currently onsite, there are multiple places that do onsite alcohol at this location, and staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received six additional protests and two approvals since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone. We have someone here representing the applicant. Come on down.
Name is Mark Ketanis. Actually worked for the restaurant company that's trying to go in there. Again, like they stated, there are other establishments in the same property that are actually closer to the park in the property than we are, that are selling alcohol as well for on-premise.
What kind of a restaurant it's going in?
It's called Smash Burger. It's burgers, chicken sandwiches, and salads. Just going to sell literally six or seven different bottles of beer and wine splits, and that's it.
Don't care about that. What kind of hamburgers?
Certified Angus beef, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And you'll accept the conditions as presented in the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion for approval of SUP 36782, following all staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
That goes forward to the City Council at their meeting of February 17.
We now move to item number 16, which is a special use permit 36823. The applicant owner is Cherie Ganeshia, Inc., for a proposed 4,194 square foot supper club at 4450 York Tameaway, suite 115, 120, and 125. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, last year, the applicant received approval for a special use permit at this location for a 3,312 square foot supper club. At this time, the applicant is proposing to increase the size by more than 10%, which constitutes a major modification to the application and requires a review by a public hearing. Staff finds that the use can be conducted in a compatible manner with the surrounding uses and is recommending approval. Please note, we have received seven additional, or two additional protests since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to please...
I'm right here.
Approach the microphone and give us a name for the record.
I'm Gary Metzger, 748 Seclusion. The owner, Raj Patel, has asked me to attend on his behalf. He's out of the country, and I agree with the recommendations of the staff.
Thank you. And accept the conditions?
I do.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please come up and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further questions, I would go ahead, move to follow staff's recommendation and approve special use permit 36823, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
Before we vote, I'm going to abstain on this item because I think Mr. Patel is related to a tenant of mine in another center.
Oh, okay.
And I, just being cautious, I can't confirm that, but I will abstain based on that reason.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Please cast your votes, recognizing the one abstention. Please post. Motion carries.
And the matter goes forward to the City Council at their meeting of February 17.
We move to item number 17, which is a special use permit 36891. The applicant is Marri Gonzalez. The owner is Main Street Las Vegas LLC for a proposed 1,680 square foot tattoo parlor, body piercing studio at 1223 South Main Street. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed tattoo parlor, body piercing establishment will be located within a CM Commercial Industrial Zone and is usually a permitted use within that zoning district. However, the site is also located within the 18B Las Vegas Arts District of the Downtown Centennial Plan, which only allows the use with the approval of a special use permit. The use is appropriate for the area and can be conducted in a manner that will be compatible with the surrounding land uses, therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that two protests have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
My name's Robert Gonzalez, and I'm at 1223 South Main Street in Las Vegas.
Thank you.
No.
You're representing the applicant?
Correct.
And would you accept the conditions as presented in the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I do own property within the immediate notice area.
Thank you.
Chairman, if there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion. I know this was voted on by the 18B Neighborhood Board, and they approved it. They're the most affected by it, and my motion would be for approval following the, all of the recommendations of the staff, or conditions, rather, of the staff.
Thank you.
If there are any.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that does go forward to the City Council at their meeting of February 17.
We now move to item number 18, which is Site Development Review 36642. The applicant owner is Petroni Development LLC for a plant nursery and storage facility with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the east and south perimeters, wherein eight feet is the minimum required, and to allow zero trees along the east and south perimeters, where 15 were approved, at 5001 Donny Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is to amend the previously approved Site Development Plan Review that allowed the plant nursery and storage facility at the subject location. The applicant is requesting waivers and an exception to the Title 19.12 landscaping standards and is proposing to add three storage structures to the site. As the requested site changes do not meet the minimum requirements of Title 19 and will result in a site that does not provide adequate buffering for adjacent uses, staff is recommending denial of the request. If denied, the site would have to comply with the previously approved Site Development Plan Review. If approved, condition of approval number two should be revised to read, "This approval shall be void two years from the date of final approval unless a building permit has been issued for the principal building on the site pursuant to the requirements of the Building and Safety Department. An extension of time may be filed for consideration by the City of Las Vegas." Please note that one letter of support has been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have...
Ron Petroni with Petroni Development LLC, 5001 Donny Avenue. And I'm just here to propose that I can go ahead and do the project based on the conditions that the staff has recommended. I've been in contact with Doug Rankin and people down at planning, and we've kind of worked out what they feel would be viable for me to do, to go ahead and meet the requirements and conditions, and then I'd like to go ahead and, and just, you know, go with that and go ahead and go on with the project and get it done.
So you'll accept the conditions as presented in the report?
Yeah, my only concern with previously, was that condition that they talked about, the void two years from the date of final approval unless a building permit is renewed for a principal building on the site, which I don't have a building on the site, it's just a yard for storage of plant materials and so forth. And he had emailed me back that as long as I pulled the permits for the couple of storage containers that I have proposed, that that would satisfy, and I just want to make sure that that is correct verbiage, so that two years from now, I'm not back here, you know, after I've done all the conditions, and then for some reason, somebody changes them or something, I just want to make sure that that, that is still correct, that as long as I go ahead and get those permitted and final that we're okay, this isn't going to come up two years from now again.
Thank you. Is that...
And that's correct. We met with the building, the Safety Department, and they determined that the structure as they were would not require a foundation, but would require a building permit for those storage, that storage unit.
And I'm fine with that. I just didn't want it to come back around, you know, that there's no principal building there, that, you know, now this is an issue again.
Thank you. Well, you've created a record to substantiate your position, so you're okay.
That's all.
Okay. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Those people that are along Donny Street, the residential to the north, are they going to see this? Is there going to be any trees or anything that's, that's, that's going to, is this what they're looking at?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Wait, wait just a minute. Don't sit down. I have a couple of questions.
Okay, yes.
Rob, thank you. The build, I want to make sure you understand, along your east and south side, there's already brick walls there in place, right?
There's already brick walls, all, this is all enclosed. The 20-foot setback from the street is what you see on the screen now, and is already landscaped. I mean, it's the nicest landscape on the street, you know, as a matter of fact, the liaison to the councilman that I spoke to actually went by and agreed, and she felt everything was fine pretty much the way it was. The biggest concern for me was that on the interior of the lot, they were wanting me to landscape all the way around the whole interior. Well, when I got in there and started putting this whole project together, I thought, that's, you know, nobody's going to see it. It's, there's, it's, there's no access for the public. It's just a wholesale lot where I have a few employees, as needed, to do whatever work we need to do. So basically, what I was proposing is, on the, on the west side is, is the Jehovah Witness Church, and they might be the only ones that can see one of those buildings, and on along that side, there was supposed to be 10 trees planted, and I proposed 15, and I'm actually maybe going to exceed that and go to 20, because I want to develop a block on that side, too, because on the Jehovah Witness side, where they poured the asphalt, it's built up a bit on the wall, and that's a short wall, and we've had problems with people jumping over and stealing equipment, which is why I need the, you know, the enclosures for storing equipment and hand tools and all that kind of stuff. So I was, you know, we talked about the landscaping and everything else. Basically, on that south side is Edwards Mini Stores. It's a 12-foot wall. Nobody's going to see landscaping there. And on the other side is the Red Feather Center. It's an 18-foot wall on their side and a 12-foot on my side, so nobody's going to see any landscaping there, so it would really just be a waste of, you know, water, basically, landscaping those two portions. So in order to help satisfy the city's requirements, I wanted to go more and exceed that because it will also help buffer, for me, people jumping over that wall, so that's why I want to exceed even their requirements.
I think with that having been said, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes, I'll move for approval of item number 18, subject to all of staff's conditions as amended, as he agreed to, as amended, correct?
Yes.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. The motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, we now move to item number 19, which is Site Development Review 36787. The applicant owner is Goguelas Centro Familiar Cristiano to allow site modification for an approved two-story, 1,6,500 square foot church, house of worship, and private school primary with waivers of building placement standards and landscape buffer standards to allow a buffer width of eight feet along a portion of the south perimeter, where 15 feet is required, at the southeast corner of Midler Mesa Drive and Michael Way. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request for a major amendment maintains the same floor area as the previously approved Site Development Plan Review, but reconfigures the building and site to provide enhanced architectural detail and to improve site circulation and functionality. The requested waivers of Title 19 landscape buffer requirements and building placement standards are minor in nature and will have a minimal impact on the adjacent surrounding properties. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. If this application is denied, the site development must comply with the previously approved Site Development Plan Review. Please note that five protests and six letters of support have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Matt Katie, 405 Southeast 52nd.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We overall approve of all the conditions. There's just a couple items that we want a clarification on.
Please.
First off is number six. It lists the south perimeter where 15 feet is required. If you can... There we go. We're required to have an eight-foot buffer along the south portion. I think there's a small typo. I think the 15-foot, eight-foot confusion is up here. There's a small corner of our lot that's not owned by us. It's owned by the Homeowners Association across the street. Because we're not adjacent to the road, we believe that we should only have an eight-foot buffer, not a 15-foot buffer for this small portion right here. And that was what was discussed at a pre-application meeting, and I think number six is just simply a misprint. a misprint.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
That eight-foot buffer is along the south property line for the portion of the site along Roberta Lane. Since that is adjacent to public right of way, it, it would require a fifteen-foot landscape buffer.
You're referring to this area right here? That will actually come up on another one of my comments, so we'll just come right back to that. The next one I need clarification was, is on number twenty in reference to the sidewalk. We plan to have continuous sidewalks all across the property. Where it actually comes in towards the building is here. It lists that it has to come into the first location. We just want a clarification that we're, we'll be in compliance so we can bring our sidewalk through to this direction and not currently over here.
Yeah, Lucian Piot, Public Works, if I may. Essentially, our condition requires that all sidewalks, when they terminate onsite, they end in a, you continue at least on one side of each drive aisle and then end in a handicap ramp. So that's what we're looking for is for each drive aisle, you have access from the public street to onsite on your property.
With what I've explained, do you feel that we've met that or? There'll be continuous around the property, but where it actually comes in would be over here to the access of the church. But these would have the handicap ramps being continuous all the way across the property?
Well, our, well, currently we're, I see one, two, three, three access aisles.
Correct.
So each of, our condition would require each of those access aisles to take sidewalk and then end, end the sidewalk onsite in a handicap ramp. But, you know, if you feel that you don't want to do that or you can't do that for some reason, we do have, you know, a, the condition says unless otherwise allowed by a city engineer. So you can meet with the city engineer, determine if, if it's not needed, then we can eliminate it.
Maybe I'm confused. My understanding is that our, the way we had planned to do it is our sidewalk will come, we'll have the handicap ramp down onto the drive aisle, and then a handicap ramp back onto the sidewalk. So you could, a handicap person could go all the way around the site without a problem.
Yeah, and it's, it's more someone accessing from any aisle onsite, so.
Okay.
So if you're, say you're at that, what direction is that? The, the west side or east side?
This area.
Yeah, those two. Each aisle would have sidewalk going into the property and then ending onsite with a handicap ramp.
And that was the problem we had is bringing the sidewalk over here, not only will, will we lose a couple parking spaces, but it's somewhat of a travel distance, whereas here it's very, it's easy because that's one of the main entrances. So I guess.
Can you point out your, your, your handicap spaces, where they are?
The handicap spaces, they're right here. I'm not sure if my fingers cover them. They're right there. We've provided enough of them. This is literally considered the main entrance, but this is a secondary entrance, almost as grand as the main entrance would be. We also have additional handicapped over here, and we are developing a site in a phased approach. So once the site's completely built out, you see we've added additional handicap spaces.
I, I don't see that we're speaking about the number of handicap parking spaces. They're talking about handicapped access off the sidewalk.
I agree. I was just answering this question. We, I didn't want him to say that there's not enough handicap we've provided.
Yeah, I don't think they brought that one up as yet.
It looks to me like there is, I, I don't know if there's landscaping planned in there, but it looks like there would be space where you have your, your aisle there with, with the parking spaces. It wouldn't take out, you know, the parking spaces on the plant that I have.
On the first northeast corner?
Talking about, we're talking about, if you have the sidewalk already, what we're talking about is bringing the sidewalk here and then the stop.
He was talking about here.
Yeah, it's just the same, if anyone's coming from this side.
Mr. Chairman, did they get a chance to review this plan prior to the meeting?
That will be interesting.
Okay, please, go ahead.
The next two items that I have are, I guess, small typos. On the first paragraph of the analysis, it lists phase one to be forty-four thousand square feet. Forty, the first phase actually totals forty-five thousand three hundred and forty-six square feet. I just want to make sure that as we move forward, there's not a misunderstanding. Phase two will total sixty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-four square feet instead of the sixty-four five hundred listed.
Might I suggest a, a condition that the applicant submit a phasing plan prior to issuance of any building permits approved administratively by the planning department?
Oh, no problem. And then the other question I had in that same area is, we've got two additional phases planned for. Depending on the needs of the church, we're not quite sure if the additional sanctuary space or the additional classroom space, which one might come first. So our suggestion is that as, we've already submitted the full one-hundred-and-six-thousand square foot elevation and floor plan, we would like to have staff level approval and comments and not have to go through a major modification as long as there's not, we're within the ten percent variance.
Mr. Chairman, that would be based upon the requirements of code, and it's not up to the decision of either the planning staff or the planning commission on to whether or not something's a major or minor amendment to a site plan.
I think you'll see, we already have submitted the full one-hundred-and-six-thousand floor plan and elevation. I just couldn't tell you which side would go first. So what we would like to do is be able to, as long as we stay within one-hundred-and-six-thousand square feet and we stay within the concern, the current conceptual design, we're able to just submit a building plan and can proceed forward and study on to a major modification.
Sir, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, we need, we can't make a commitment to some future iteration that we don't know what it is. So that's something that we'd have to analyze once it comes in. We can't estimate at this time.
Okay. I guess, I'm a little confused. We, we know it'll be additional sanctuary. We know it'll be additional classroom. We've submitted to you floor plans and elevations of it, not exact floor plans, but the floor plans and elevations of it. So as long as we stay within those guidelines and those floor plans.
Mr. Chairman.
We need exacts.
Well, it is exact. That's exactly what the elevation will look like, and it's exactly what the floor plan. You'll see that we have the two-phase site plans. I just.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. If I could just say this to the commission, it's going to be what it's going to be. When they, when they come back, they're going to submit to the planning department whatever it is they want to do, and at that time, the planning department's going to decide whether it's a major amendment or a minor amendment. That's how our code works. And so tonight, it would really be inappropriate for our planning staff, this lawyer, this commission, to say, sure, you don't need to come in for a major amendment because they may need to, they may not need to. But we'll, we'll know when they file for that addition.
Why don't you just take what you've got at this point, which is staff recommendation for approval.
Okay.
And work out the details as you develop them. We're not going to approve the details when you don't have them.
Exactly. I understand. At that point, that'll conclude the clarification that I need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please give us your name, please.
Eleanor Alboard, and I'm the president of Smoke Ranch Villas, which is next door to where they're building this complex. And our concern is, we're not objecting to the school and the church, but why only eight feet from our wall where they're building instead of fifteen? I think that's a real concern. We have enough problems with the children crossing from the school across the street crossing. We have the gates closed between two and four just to keep them out of our living room and on our steps and all that without a new one next door to us. Only eight feet? Why eight feet when it says it's required fifteen feet? That's my concern.
Very good question.
And we do have a hundred-and-fifteen homes here in this beautiful little area, and most of us are retired, and it's very hard then if you're going to have children jumping the walls and climbing around more than usual, especially if it's so close. They can just come out of their living room and jump over.
Ma'am, are you talking about the, the property along Madre Mesa or are you talking about the property along Roberta Way?
We're talking about the one where it puts into our property where it says Bugle. You see where it says, according to the charter? Mm-hmm. Where Bugle.
So you've got, you've got a small little, for lack of a better description, pie-shaped piece.
Yes.
That's part of their site based on the way the alignment of the road is.
Yes.
And what, what does the association plan to do with that little piece of property?
Not anything.
Okay, so you're going to set it there, which is an aberration in and of itself, and then you want the applicant to put fifteen feet around something that you're going to leave fallow for probably the next twenty years?
I don't know. I won't be around probably.
And, and I'm sure I'm not going to be, to tell you the truth, but I, I understand your concerns, but I, I'm not seeing the benefit of this.
Yeah, we have the RV lot is, is next to where this is going to be, and maybe the kids will decide they'll take a boat or an RV on the way to school. I don't know. Our wall is very slow, really low and old, and the kids climb over it as it is. So if we have these new school with new kids over there, they're going to have a field day. It's going to be so close, I'd just rather.
But you've got a street between, you've got Madre Mesa between you.
No, no.
Madre Mesa's on the other side.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I, did you all meet?
So they're next to Roberta?
They're in the south.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this is Roberta.
Run Bugle Way, yes.
We've got too many people having conversations. I'll recognize Mr. Evans at this point.
I'm just curious if you all met with this gentleman and his team?
Not at all.
Wouldn't that be a good place to start?
Well, it would be nice if we knew about it.
No one contacted us.
But I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that he's got some questions, and sir, with all due respect, I think it would be best to maybe address those to our staff before coming to these meetings, you know, because there may be wordsmithing or clerical errors or a misunderstanding. And you folks who are immediately adjacent, perhaps you can have a meeting of the minds and come up with some solutions you can all agree with. So my thought was, I'm uncomfortable voting on something when I don't think anybody really has had a thorough discussion of what the issues are.
Can I have a chance to respond?
Yeah, as soon as they get done.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and we have not had, I was not aware of this until I saw this plan that came in the mail to each of the homeowners in our villas here.
Thank you.
So that's why a couple of people said to me, Eleanor, what are you going to do about that? Why would we have an eight-foot buffer instead of a fifteen? You want those people running our yard? Bah, 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 bah. So that's why we're here.
Typically, what we expect out of a any-size development is, is a neighborhood meeting where you talk to everybody about what you're trying to do, particularly when we're dealing one of this significance.
Correct. We've had two prior to this. This site was already approved for a church. We had two neighborhood meetings.
When was this?
Two thousand and eight, when it was initially approved for church use.
No, no. We had none.
I have not only the sign-in sheets from the church meetings, but I have over thirty letters of recommendation from neighbors in support of the project.
Where were they held and who was invited? Because we did not.
Not Smoke Ranch.
Not Smoke Ranch. I don't know who you talked to.
Well, I'm getting to the point where I'm feeling pretty uncomfortable with it too, so, you know, I think we need to talk.
Okay.
And it's not going to hurt you. You plan turning soil tomorrow?
No, but to keep our time.
When, when?
We would hope to do it in May.
You've got, you've got a little bit of time then.
Okay.
And it would allow you the opportunity to meet with Public Works staff and get those issues squared away. I think you'd probably save yourself a lot of headaches down the road if you just stop, catch your breath and talk to some people.
No, I understand. We've gone through, and I can.
Tony Young, we're the local architect on this. We, this project was originally approved in two thousand and eight, and all we have done, we've been meeting with staff on this for the last three months, okay? And we've gone through the original conditions, and what we did is, is the church, now that their funding's in place, they want to move this project ahead, and they know exactly what they want to do now, and that's when we were hired to basically take a, a concept of the original approval and make it a functioning project for them. And that's what you guys are seeing tonight. That's what the staff has seen for the last three months that we've been developing with them. So with that being said, all we're asking tonight, we've jumped through all of the hoops that we could possibly jump through, and I know you guys may feel uncomfortable, but staff, we're not, all we're doing is clarifying what was already approved in two thousand and eight. And the reason we're here today now is because they thought the church, when they were approved in two thousand and eight, that they would hire us, we would start the design, and they would submit it to the city, and we said, that's, we need to go and meet with staff, and that's what started the major, once we met with them, they said, this is a major plan amendment and that we needed to do, you know, run through the whole course again, and that's why we're here tonight. We've, staff knows that, we're, we're abiding by all of the original SDR plus the original conditions, or the original conditions plus the current conditions they've placed on us, and we're meeting all of those conditions.
But you haven't met with your neighbors.
Excuse me, through me, through Ms. Chairman, and she's exactly right, and, and, and that's what part of the process is, you should notify your neighbors and let them know. I'm looking at the notes, and you're exactly right. I see August, August twentieth, the council approved it. November twentieth, the planning department did a conditional improvement. And then on November eighteenth, there were some other items discussed, but when it gets down to the line that says a neighborhood meeting, it says a meeting is not required nor was one held. And, and so, so what we're saying is, well, these neighbors, they live there, and they have a say in the neighborhood, and they, and they, hear me out, please. And they've been noticed properly, and she's held the notice. They have concerns, they come to the meeting. Now, we're saying, instead of you saying, well, staff approved this and we're ready to go, and I'm the architect and I'm going to build it, and just because staff said, take, take, let's hold it for a couple of weeks. Let's let you and the neighbors sit and talk, let them express their concerns, and you answer them. And then you come back to the next meeting and you say, we've had a neighborhood meeting, we've either worked out the concerns. I'm sure the, the young lady here will come back and say, yes, we did, and we're either okay with it or we're not, and we continue to discuss. That's, just like we talked about earlier, when we talked about a process.
Right.
That's how the process works.
And, and we, we agree with that. What, what we would like to do is, what's happened to us in our process is we've lost two months, the church has, because we've had to do this major amendment because they understood, which was their misunderstanding, that they were ready to go. What we would like to do is if we can make some changes or agreements tonight, we would like to keep this project moving ahead.
We can't do the project, we cannot do that at the dais. We, we can't design it and let you guys do that right here. What I, what I would recommend is you, you take the additional time because I, I understand you're on a timeline and all that, but unfortunately, that's not my, my issue. My issue's to make sure that the residents are satisfied with what's coming in their neighborhood. And so, and so with that, I would like to, to, to offer to hold this, and I want to ask the director or staff what would be the proper amount of time to bring this back. Is it a week, two weeks?
I just have one quick question, just so I understand, just.
Time out, time out, time out. Hold on here. Just, can I just breathe a second? The commissioner has a motion on the, on the floor, and then we'll have some comments, and then we, then we'll go forward here.
If I may, in this case where it is an amendment to an existing plan, and the, the neighbors are now aware of this and, and are prepared to discuss this, ordinarily, we would request the full thirty days in order for the formal process to be gone through with regard to the selection of the site for the meeting and all of that. I think in this case, it may well be that we know the neighborhood that's affected the persons that are before us here, and I'm assuming there's a, there's a site somewhere, a meeting room or something that could be utilized. The applicant is certainly aware of the issues, and therefore, I would anticipate that they The applicant is certainly aware of the issues, and therefore, I would anticipate that they would be able to meet and have their discussion, speak with staff if there's any issues with regard to the sidewalk, and get that accomplished within the... Prior to the next meeting, and also in anticipation of no change in the plans. Therefore, in this rare case, I would think that the abeyance for two weeks would be appropriate.
And that would be my motion to hold this for two weeks. And Ms. Eleanor?
Yes.
Right after we make this motion, I'd like you to get with this gentleman, get his name and address, and you guys, within the next two weeks, make a time where you guys can meet and hash it out.
Thank you. Motion's been made, but before I request the vote, I do have comments coming in.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify this, because I wanna make this clear to everybody, to the neighbors here. I know commissioners are very pro neighborhood meetings and making sure neighborhood's involvement. But this project was approved. They... It's not like this developer or church is coming here with this aberration, trying to slide something by the neighbors. This was approved.
By whom? Yeah.
It was approved by the city. So I...
Sorry, residents notified?
Would you let me finish, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay. And they came back and asked for modifications. So I... This isn't just like something we slid by somebody in the middle of the night here. And that's the way this was starting to sound to me. When somebody gets an approval and they bring in their final plans and there's some technical corrections, that isn't like the project should be thrown out the door. It's just those are technical corrections that may rise to a major modification. But I just want everybody... This was a project that was brought before the city and was approved. So the neighbors were... Should've been or notified or were approved. So this isn't...
I'm here 15 years. I have nothing.
Now, that's it. We got a motion, we're gonna vote.
There's a motion on the floor.
So we're in good shape.
There was a meeting two years ago.
Not with us.
But this also might give you the opportunity to decide what you wanna do with that 15 feet that's just gonna sit there empty. That sounds pretty great.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
It's not... Sure, go right ahead, sir.
We're not objecting to the project.
Your name and address.
And we wanna know that our concern not be taken care of it, and we have not been addressed on that. My name is Vinnie Pesatola.
Very good.
And I'm a project...
Thank you.
So we're not objecting to the project. We just wanna be heard.
I hear you.
And we just been bypassed, and that's not the way we're...
Okay. And there's apparently... Who knows when the... Who was invited or who was there? But the point is that the motion's been made for two weeks, and I think that the motion's made, so please cast your votes.
Can we ensure that you all get together?
Yeah, could I make one comment? I'll be more than happy if I didn't realize that 15-foot variance was an issue. I'll be happy to withdraw that variance and also give them the 15-foot buffer. If that's the... I had no idea that that was the unrest here.
Yeah, we... I still wanted to hold it for two weeks too. I appreciate your willingness, but we don't design at the dais.
If you come to that conclusion in two weeks, come back and say, "This is what we agreed to."
But isn't our next meeting, your next meeting, 30 days from now?
Two weeks.
Oh, okay.
And one last cautionary aspect. Please talk to the staff so that if there are issues, we don't end up seeing them here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Again, that is a debate to the January 28th Planning Commission hearing.
Well, that... Yeah, that's right. Right, okay. And how much... What's the vibration level associated with that church? We've got... Now we can go to item number 20, which is a text amendment, 36-330. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's to amend Table 2 of 19.04.010 to modify the conditional use regulations for vehicle parking, storage, or repair in residential zoning districts used related to recreational vehicle parking, parking surface material, and defining mechanically inoperable. Staff report, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. This staff report comes to us in order to clarify the requirements for parking and storing and repairing of vehicles. It also reintroduces the ability for residents to park vehicles on decomposed granite. And it also reduces the term that a mechanically inoperable vehicle can be stored on a residential zone from 90 days to 60 days. And it also limits the number of vehicles that may be repaired to four within a 12-month period. Staff has no recommendation on this, as this is a request from the Code Enforcement Division in order to assist them with some concerns they had. There are quite a few sections to this code. If you have any particular questions, I'll be happy to reference those and answer them as best I can.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance for us to speak on the matter, please approach.
I don't know if this is a public hearing, but my question, when will this be heard at the recommending committee?
We don't know. It goes to the city attorney's office, and then it'll get noticed on the recommending committee. So until they... It gets through their queue, we don't have a specific date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Let me close the public hearing. Anyone else in attendance for us to speak? Seeing now the public hearing closed, turn it over to Mr. Evans for discussion.
Mr. Rankin, maybe I missed it. In your presentation, did it discuss that this is for large-size lots? Or is it any size?
Some of the changes do relate to RE property. And for instance, the maximum number of vehicles are six at any one time regardless of the size of the lot. This would add an exception to allow nine vehicles in RA and RE districts, where six was the maximum previously. It adds a requirement that all stored vehicles be operable with inflated tires, not utilized for storage, and that the undercarriage be free of debris and...
And that's my question. How does code enforcement determine whether or not in the front yard there are six vehicles whether they're operable? Does it require the... They go turn over the key?
At this... This text amendment also adds a provision. Previously, there was no provision in the code that required someone demonstrate that a vehicle is operable. The code now does indicate that the owner must demonstrate that the vehicle is operable.
The reason I ask, because I know that the devils are in the details, in many of the neighborhoods in my ward, there are four, five, six, in some, a couple of cases, 11 cars in the yard. In some cases, there've been code enforcement actions, but over the years, there's still 11 cars in the yard. Does this minimize... I'm not sure what this does or why we're doing it.
Code enforcement indicates that they've taken many of these cases to action by the muni courts and have lost because the judges have found that the code is unclear in regards to parked, stored, inoperable, operable, and they're hoping that these changes will clarify that so that they can be more successful in their enforcement efforts.
Mr. Evans, reading the details, I mean, it says on 11A, if I'm looking at the right section that we're discussing, but the owner must provide evidence sufficient to demonstrate proof of operability. And I, you know, what's operable? If it's sitting there and my radiator is broken, well, I probably can still start it up and drive it around. I'm not gonna have any problem with it. If my starter's out and I can't start it up, that might be a problem for code enforcement. But I see some wisdom behind it, because I do see people splitting hairs and saying, "Well, this car's just fine. I haven't started in 12 years, but it's still operable." Well, all right, it's sitting, this guy, grass going around it. It's not operable. You won't be able to start it.
But at this point in time, what does our code allow in terms of vehicles in the front yard in a residential district? Hey, can you folks take it out there a minute, maybe, in the hallway? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Currently, you can't store vehicles in your front yard. You can park your vehicles in your front yard and all...
How many?
Residential... Well, the required parking is two. I don't know what the maximum is. The maximum allowed area is 50% of the lot, and we're gonna find out soon if that works, because that goes to court on Wednesday. There's a challenge to the 50% rule, and we will find out on Wednesday on whether or not that will withstand a test in the courts. And we may be back again, making a change to the number of vehicles parked in the front yard.
And all must be operable.
Yes, the front yard vehicles all have to be operable. Yeah, you can't have a junkyard in a residential property.
It says six vehicles. Is that where they're splitting hairs?
Well, it's six vehicles on site, yeah.
Right. Oh, you're talking just specifically the front yard?
Anywhere on the property would be six. And this would amend it, so in an RE lot, you could have nine.
How do you define yard? I mean, does that mean those vehicles have to be in on the concrete driveway of the property, or can you pull them up in the grass?
No, they cannot be parked on grass. They have to be required... Currently, the code requires them to be parked on a concrete driveway. This code would allow a concrete driveway, paver strips, and decomposed granite.
Okay. I'm just concerned, because I don't wanna limit, you know, I don't wanna... On one hand, I mean, I feel sometimes that we're telling people unnecessarily what they should or shouldn't do. But unfortunately, if we leave it to thoughtfulness, it's not gonna happen. And this is basically saying that it's okay to have six cars.
Currently, the code allows you to have six vehicles on your property.
Six is changing.
Yeah, that's not changing. What it is, is allowing three additional cars on larger lots, RE and RA lots. An RE lot has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet in the code, and RE is 40,000 square feet.
Any further discussion?
I think six cars in the front yard is...
Stylish.
A lot too many.
It's a party.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move for approval of item number 20.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post.
And that goes forward to council and ordinance forum.
Thank you. We now move item number 22, which is text amendment 34-878. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's to amend Title 18 and Title 19 to revise and update procedures and definitions related to the issuance of permits for site grading.
Mr. Chairman, currently at the city of Las Vegas, there's a policy in place that allows early grading of sites. However, the code itself is in conflict with this policy. The code does not permit you to do early grading. What this would do is add language to Title 18 and 19 to allow for a civil plans review sufficient enough so that staff can determine and mitigate impacts to any plan and allow for grading prior to full submission of civil permits. And staff is supportive of this item.
Do we have a public hearing on this one?
Yes.
I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and anyone in attendance for us to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. That was a fake. Okay, we... Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter of the planning commissioners for discussion. Save me, Mr. Farlow. Come up and say something.
As we all watched.
I'll move for approval of item number 22.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post.
The matter will go forward to the city council and ordinance forum.
We now move item number 23, which is Directors 36-759. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas and its election of the 2010 Planning Commission officers.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Recognizing your distinguished term here, I would like to make a motion to nominate Rick Cruzeal as the chair for the Las Vegas Planning Commission for the 2010 calendar year.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
I had a question on motion.
Please.
Just a comment. I'll make my yearly disclosure on this issue of how we go about selecting members to be on the commission. Again, I still feel that we should do it in the order as how we were brought on to the board. That's how it's been done for a long time, except for the last couple of years. I think every person on this board ought to have an opportunity to be chair and vice chair without us having to go in the middle of the night and lobby everybody for their support. And so I think, again, to keep it fair and equitable, that's the way it should be. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
We don't have one.
Please post. Motion carries.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
And a vice chair?
I'd make a motion to... For Keen Ellsworth, as vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and ask for a vote on the motion, please.
Comment on the motion. I'll echo the same comments as well. I'm gonna vote no on this, because nobody asked me about who to support on this as well. So I know there's been some lobbying going on, and I think it should be fair that you ought to speak to all of us and not exclude some of us.
Thank you. Motion's made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries. Should I close it out, or you wanna do the citizen's participation? Okay. We now move to the citizen's participation portion of the agenda. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like to go back to number 20, please. Because if I'm not wrong on this, vehicles... Motor boats are considered vehicles under the law. You have to have your vehicle registration and stuff on it. So in the wintertime, you bring your boat, and you set it on your driveway, and you pull the motor off of the thing. You don't leave the motor sitting on there. So how are you gonna demonstrate that that thing is gonna work when the motor's not there? You got the paddles there. Are they gonna accept the paddles?
If he can paddle fast enough, he can demonstrate it's operable.
What's this?
If he can paddle fast enough, he can demonstrate it's operable.
If you can plane it with the paddles. No, I mean, am I correct in this, that motor... That motor boats are considered vehicles?[1690.44]